Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's July 12, 2012 meeting. And if you would please, all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For all in attendance, I would note that today's meeting is being livestreamed, and so please be aware. In noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we will proceed per the agenda that's been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and other than to make a special notation that I think the commission will be glad to hear, I don't have much else additional to say. There's been suggestion, more than once, that we start our meetings at 1:00 instead of 12:30, allow people to take full advantage of their lunch period before we get started. And so, starting in September, we will start at 1:00. That will be the rule from now on. Of course, we do not meet in August, so this gives us the month of August to make sure that everything is properly advertised and noticed, and people know that this momentous change in the way we do business. So again, September 6th, their meeting, and it'll begin at 1:00. Agenda item number two is a report of the executive director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few announcements to make that might be of interest to the public. First of all, on July 19th, we are holding a public meeting and comment on the Southwest Eco District Plan, which we'll be hearing later on today. This meeting will be held at 6:30 PM at the Office of Planning on the southwest side, so we hope that you will all be able to attend. In addition, we have just a couple of personnel announcements to make. First, Bill Dowd, who you all know as our Director of Physical Planning, began a six-month detail to the General Services Administration. Bill will serve as Acting Regional Commissioner of the National Capitol Region Public Building Service. Elizabeth Miller will serve as NCPC's Acting Director of Physical Planning until further notice. I'd like to also introduce Kathleen Kornopolis. Kathleen, if you would stand. Kathleen is currently the Regional Public Building Service Commissioner for GSA, and she also started a six-month detail at NCPC. So she'll be focusing on a lot of important issues between NCPC and GSA, including the implementation of the Southwest Eco District, as well as the Federal Capital Improvements Program and other things that I think we have tested interested. So we do welcome Kathleen to NCPC for the next six months. Also, we have a few interns that have joined us. Matthew Killian. Matthew joins the Office of Physical Planning as a summer intern. Matthew is a rising senior at Harvard University, majoring in chemistry, and he has supported our staff's effort to finalize the Southwest Eco District Plan. Also, we welcome two summer interns from the District of Columbia Summer Youth Employment Program, Mary Meese. Mary is a rising senior at Frank Bleu Senior High School. And also, John William Carroll is a rising junior at the University of Oklahoma, majoring in meteorology. And this is John William's second year at NCPC. He enjoyed it so much, he decided to come back. So we welcome all of them here at NCPC. These interns have been great for us, and I hope we've given them a great opportunity at here. So we welcome all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. On the NCPC/GSA partnership, I would say that obviously our organizations work very closely together on many, many projects, and to have senior-level personnel exchange for a six-month period, an NCPC person going to GSA and a GSA person coming here is pretty great. And so, it's a good opportunity for both organizations and for everyone involved. And for our summer interns, I'll just say generally, we remain grateful for the many contributions you make to us in the weeks and months that you are here. So thank you very much for the work that you do. Agenda item number three is the legislative update. Ms. Schuyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have something to report today. I'm pleased to announce that HR 2297, which is a bill to promote the development of the Southwest Waterfront in the District of Columbia and for other purposes, has now become public law. The bill had previously passed both the House and the Senate, albeit in different versions. Therefore, there was need for reconciliation. Reconciliation occurred, and the bill was presented to President Obama on July 29th and was signed on June 29th and was signed into law. It is now public law, 1112-143. And since I know you would like to know what this bill actually provides for, it allows the transfer of the Southwest Waterfront Development property to a redevelopment company or other private lesssee or purchaser by the Deputy Mayor for Economic Development. And it also repeals the U.S. government's reversionary interest. Essentially, what this will do is to allow redevelopment of the waterfront to proceed in a manner that we have heard about on several prior occasions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Schuyler? That's an important piece of legislation. It will become more apparent in our first agenda item. On the consent calendar, we have one item, and that's the master plan modification and installation of a perimeter fence and secondary containment fence at the Smithsonian National Zoological Park. Do we have any questions or comments from commission members on this one item? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Uh-huh.
It's been moved and seconded at the consent calendar before you. If the one item be approved, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's passed. The first item, which is Agenda Item 5A, on our open calendar, is very exciting. It's been quite a number of years in coming, and if you'll permit me, I'd like to say a few things about it. Of course, it is the Southwest Eco District Plan. The commission received an informational briefing on the plan at the May Commission Meeting. The purpose of today's meeting is to receive a full presentation on the Southwest Eco District Plan, so that we can then move to approve the plan for public comment. Today's presentation is going to be about 30 minutes. It'll be an exciting 30 minutes, I think. So at our next meeting, then, in September, we will have the staff focus again on the plan. That presentation will be after the 60-day public comment period, and we'll talk about any changes that have been made to the plan as a result of the very good public comment that we anticipate. I think the overriding point that I'd like to get across is that there are a number of synergies that are working right now, that has allowed this plan to come together and achieve some focus, and that also will aid in its implementation. And basically, those synergies are three. One is the Department of Energy building, which has no small footprint in the 15-block area that's been our focus, is now 40, 50 years old, and it's coming to a life-cycle decision that others who are responsible for the property will make. And so, that's very important. And there are other buildings in the 15-block area that equally are entering that phase of their lives that require some detailed analysis as to what to do with them. So that's kind of a fortunate thing. Second, there's a private sector initiative that's been underway in partnership with the district on the Southwest Waterfront. And it's a two-plus-billion-dollar project, and that's coming to fruition, at least in the planning stages right now. And then, third, we have the Maryland Avenue Project. And so, all of these major components are sort of coming to a head at one time, and if we had planned it, we probably couldn't have planned it for these things to sort of come together relatively all at the same time. And to not take advantage of these very fortunate coincidental synergies would almost be tragic. And so, we have probably a once-and-a-half-century opportunity to do this and to get it right. And with this plan and the two-plus years that it's been in development, really gives us that opportunity. The focus on this 15-block area, about 110 acres, is really because of the many extraordinary parts of the city. This is one quadrant that is really a workday quadrant. It's dominated by federal facilities. While there are some adjacent neighborhoods in the 15-block area that we've studied, there really isn't a whole lot of significant post-five-o'clock life. And so, this is an opportunity to breathe new life in a very important part of the city as we look over the next two or three decades. And this will be a two- or three-decade implementation. I'd also say that the plan is practical. We recognize that it's a lot of challenges, a lot of pieces, the stars have to align to see it come about, and it provides that flexibility. There are a lot of public and private sector players that have to coordinate not just their planning activities, but capital, the investment. And so, there's a lot that needs to be done in a very coordinated way. The plan, we believe, is fairly practical in its flexibility, and that's a good thing. I'd also say, kind of state the obvious, to implement this is not going to be quick, easy, or cheap. It's going to take a heck of a lot of coordinating along the way. I want to acknowledge, not only the Southwest District Task Force, Eco District Task Force has been hard at work, which more than two years ago was started out being known as the 10th Street Corridor Task Force, and it certainly preceded my time joining the commission. But as it evolved, and as the scope of its work evolved, it evolved into the Southwest District Task Force. The NCPC staff, Bill Dowd, Elizabeth Miller, and Diane Sullivan have been chief among many who have been working on this. As we just mentioned, Bill is now detailed to GSA. And quite fortunately, Kathy Kornopolis, whom you've just met, is coming from GSA, and she also, in her previous position at GSA, was very familiar with this. So there's a lot of knowledge transfer, and we're not going to miss a beat. The District of Columbia and Harriet Dragone in her office, the D.C. Office of Planning, has been key, as has GSA, Commission of Fine Arts, and USDA, all of whom helped fund the last couple of years of planning. D.C. Office of Planning also led the Small Area Plan for this area, which was no small task and has been central to our thinking of what to do with this area. And then, we've had an extraordinary number of consultants who, along the way, have done a yeoman's work on this. Now, we enter, after today and after your presumed support for this plan, to go to the public comment period. We will go to a 60-day public comment period. And Elizabeth, if I remember correctly, you said that we already have about 50 or 60 people signed up for the first meeting, which, as Mr. Costa said, is going to be July 19th. And so, we expect to get a great deal of significant public input. So with that, thank you for your indulgence. With that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth Miller, who will take us through the latest overview of this plan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. On behalf of the Southwest Eco District Task Force, we are pleased to present the Southwest Eco District Plan to circulate for a 60-day public comment period. Before I begin, I would just like to quickly introduce the project team, who has been instrumental in preparing this plan. As mentioned, Diane Sullivan has been our lead sustainability planner. She's going to be co-presenting with me today. Also, Sarah Moulton, Amy Tars, Kenny Walton, and of course, Bill Dowd have been invaluable support throughout the project, from strategic planning to urban design, building modeling, as well as public and stakeholder outreach. And also, a hands-off to our interns, who really helped us get here today, along with our Office of Public Affairs or Engagement. Otto Condon, Urban Design Principal with ZGF Architects, who is also with us here today, led our consultant team. His firm provided the urban design and environmental expertise with support from ARIP Engineering, HRNA Economic Advisors, as well as Kittleson Transportation Planners and Engineers. I just want to echo the chairman's remarks and extend our thanks to the task force for all that you've done to support our work. And it is an ambitious plan. It's a big undertaking, but I believe over time that we can really transform how future generations are going to live and work and visit and experience this part of the nation's capital. So today's briefing, Diane and I are actually going to tag team. I'm going to introduce the project, review the key recommendations, our revitalization scenario, and how the district-scale strategies will help us yield greater results. Diane's going to cover how we can create a highly sustainable mixed-use community, and why an eco-district makes economic sense, as well as how partnerships can make this For those of you that aren't familiar, and to refresh the commission's memory, this is our study area. It's about 110 acres between Independence Avenue and Main Avenue, 4th and 12th Street, as shown within this red boundary. There's approximately 10 million square feet of office here, primarily either owned or leased by the federal government. There is one hotel at this location, a little bit of retail and food service, and most of that is actually buried within these buildings. So just to explain how our project relates to the work of the Office of Planning, first of all, I should say, we kicked off this work in January of 2011 with 17 agencies that made up our task force. And that included all of the federal tenants in and around the study area, as well as those federal agencies who have jurisdiction over this area, as well as several key city agencies. So this is a result of two collaborative planning efforts. This study area boundary, which I've shown you, is actually what we focused on with the Southwest Eco Task Force, looking at neighborhood development and environmental strategies. And this corridor is the area that the DCLP focused on with the Maryland Avenue Small Area Plan. And their focus was how to deck the avenue, improve land use, transit, and public space along this corridor. These plans were very closely coordinated. They were really prepared in tandem. We've held many individual, as well as joint, meetings with the task force, working groups, an advisory committee of private property owners and the public. I think we've held over 35 meetings in all. So the overall goal of the Southwest Eco District is to transform both the 10th Street and Maryland Avenue corridors into highly sustainable, well-connected, mixed-use communities, and to create an environmental showcase of high-performing buildings and landscapes. So the Eco District Plan, which we provided to you all about a week ago, whoops, and that we've also got online for the public, and we're happy to provide you a copy as well, a hard copy if you'd like. But this plan actually lays out the development scenario, the urban design and environmental strategies, as well as a governance strategy on how we believe we can move this plan forward. So what is the Eco District? So the purpose of this study, the Southwest Eco District, is a comprehensive and forward-looking approach to sustainability and livability. It will capture, manage, and reuse energy, water, and waste beyond a single building to a group of buildings within this defined area. It will include an increase in mix of uses, transportation choices, to create a neighborhood of parks and plazas that will knit together a really vibrant, green, and walkable community. So most of you are familiar with the study area, but this is just a glimpse of what we're trying to fix. We've got mammoth, single-use buildings, no ground-floor uses, lack of pedestrian amenities, expansive amount of pavement, lots of level changes, the barriers that are created by not only the rail, but the freeway. And then, when we get down to Banneker Park, which is sometimes hard to access, it's not easy also to get down to the waterfront. And I love this picture of the folks who are having to forge their sheep's path down this 45-foot embankment. So these are the things that we believe the Eco District will rectify. So built during the urban renewal era, these mid-century modern buildings and landscapes are approaching their 50-year eligibility criteria for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places, and we do address this in our plan. One of the challenges that we have is that many of these buildings are outdated and costly to maintain. Workspace is not efficiently used, and they use way more energy and water than necessary. So why now is the time to act? The chairman covered many of these things, but I'd also like to point out that there's two kind of fundamental policy directives that provide the foundation for our work. One is the Monumental Core Framework Plan that was adopted in 2009, and the purpose of this plan was to look at how we could extend the civic qualities of the National Mall and create new settings for cultural destinations, but also how can we retain and improve the federal office base and create new places to live and work within the Monumental Core. The other critical driver here is Executive Order 13514, the federal leadership and environmental energy and economic performance that was signed by President Obama in 2009. This executive order is a transformative shift in the way the government does business. It makes the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions a priority for federal agencies, and it sets very aggressive targets for energy, water, and waste reduction. And Diane will cover this in more detail in a few minutes. The Southwest Eco District Initiative was launched to show how collaborative planning and implementation at the district scale can improve sustainability, but also reduce cost, and help revitalize an important area of the city. And as mentioned, and I would just like to expand upon, some of the drivers why we believe now is the time to act. The federal government, particularly GSA, is reexamining their property and how to meet these aggressive sustainability targets, but also how to create a more efficient workplace and, of course, reduce operating cost. The National Park Service is working diligently at trying to protect the Mall as a cultural resource, and we've got really billions of dollars being invested by the private sector. Some of the CSX is really on a fast-forward in motion to improve its rail corridor. The waterfront development, LaFonte Plaza, which is actually within our study area, is also expanding and renovating their facilities. And the district has actually set out on the course to become the greenest, healthiest, and most livable city in the nation. So I think the synergy of all of this happening is definitely an indication that now is the time to act. So I'm going to turn it over to Diane, who's going to talk about our strategies.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So we set out to achieve a highly sustainable mixed-use community, and what you know of today is an isolated federal office enclave in the southwest. And before Elizabeth comes back up here to talk about the focus areas, I thought I would do a brief recap of the framework that we presented to you in May. This is the framework that informed the development of the revitalization scenario, and it's the framework that is going to inform development in this area over the next 20 to 30 years. The framework includes guidelines, objectives, and recommendations for this development. And really, we look at it in two parts, neighborhood development and environmental systems. Neighborhood development includes the public spaces, land use, transportation, and street network. And this framework was largely informed by a market study and user survey that the D.C. Office of Planning did last year. The market study looked at the viability of land uses in this area, and the user survey asked people what would make this area a more desirable place to live. And not surprisingly, the overwhelming response was a mix of better amenities in this neighborhood. So the framework basically put together strategies for linking public spaces with new museums or new sites for museums and memorials. It looked at how to infuse mixed use into this federal office enclave, especially in that middle area there, while protecting the federal and cultural character of Independence Avenue and Banneker Park. We looked at new places for retail nodes and how to activate building frontages. And we did two transportation studies. The first, which looked at whether it was actually possible to reconnect these streets and meet acceptable clearances. And the second study actually looked at the development scenario and tested its impact on the street network and the existing transportation. And these studies, in turn, informed our recommendations for creating a much better intermodal system here, improving walkability and mobility, and improving just the overall transit circulation throughout the area. And then, we also did a conceptual, high-level analysis of looking at possible bus-area layover parking for tour buses underneath 10th Street and under Banneker. This is clearly something that needs to be studied in more detail, and we need to take into account the neighborhood concerns in this area, but these areas are possible solutions for the problem of tour bus idling in this area. And then, we also looked at street function and character, so recognize which streets should be more monumental in character, ones that emphasize view corridors, significant architecture, that play host to public events, and which streets should be more local in character. And then, the second part of our framework was the environmental systems. And again, just a recap of what you heard in May, this looked at energy, water, waste, and green infrastructure. Very early on, we worked with GSA and the private property owners to sort of establish an existing baseline of how the buildings are performing today. As you know, the federal mid-century modern buildings are not performing that well in terms of energy and water use, just because of their age, their size, their orientation. After we established that baseline, we set targets for all of these areas, most of which are based on the executive order. And then, we went forward with building strategies. These are low-hanging fruit. We always want to try and reduce our energy and water use first, before looking at other sources for providing that. And then, we looked at block and district strategies, which really are the crux of this plan and allow us to meet our targets. So at the building scale, basically, we put together a list of different strategies that can be done, based on whether a building was going to be around for the long term, or if it was going to be fully altered or redeveloped in the near term, then obviously, we're not going to employ as many strategies in terms of making them more energy and water And then, at the block and district scale, let's start with energy. Our energy source, as you know, today is very dirty, and most of it is from coal-generated electricity. It's very inefficient. It emits a significant number of greenhouse gas emissions. Our goal for this area was to strive for a zero-net-energy district as measured in carbon. This is very hard to do in an urban area. However, our block and district strategies do get us much closer to achieving this goal. So at the block scale, we had four big strategies, and all of these really allow for the sharing of energy in between buildings within a block. There's solar thermal, which is just basically heating hot water on the roof. There's solar PV, obviously using the sun's energy for electricity. Ground-source heat, which is using the constant temperature from the earth to provide heating and cooling in buildings. And then, the central utility plant as well, which allows for the sharing of cooling and heating between buildings also. At the district scale, we had two very big strategies. One was expanding the central utility plant that is owned and operated by GSA. As you know, it is only allowed to service federal buildings, and which it does in this area, and for buildings beyond, and some of the Smithsonian buildings as well. We see this as a very valuable resource, because it runs on natural gas and could possibly run on a renewable source in the future. But it really plays a large impact in reducing this area's greenhouse gas emissions. We would really like to see the new private development come onto this plant as well. And then, the other is to start to establish microgrids in this area, which basically allows for the local production and distribution of energy. It's more reliable, and it can be more efficient. We set goals for water. We tried to reduce our potable water use in half, and we also set out to manage all of our storm water within the area, which is an awful lot, and also something very hard to do in such an urban area. And we have been able to meet these goals. At the block scale, basically, just taking all of the rainwater from the roofs, from the streets, treating it in planters, and then it ends up in our district water system. Waste water systems, basically, black water's going to continue to go to D.C. Plains, where it makes energy through anaerobic digestion, and gray water will be reused in this area. At the district scale, all of this will go to Cisterns under 10th Street, and if we're able to capture all of this water, send it under 10th Street, and have all of the development utilize this water for its non-potable water needs, it will provide 71% of the total water used in the district, which is just an enormous reduction in water that now has to come from D.C. water, which is a huge energy reduction as well. We set waste targets for both construction waste and building waste. This is where I think there's so much room for improvement. We, right now, divert only about 35% of our waste from the landfill in this area. I always use the example of the entire city of San Francisco is diverting 77% of its waste from the landfill. So we have a lot of room for improvement here. This is where we are still going to take advantage of the regional waste system, because it just was not feasible for us to actually manage our waste within this tiny little district. However, what we need to do is just improve our recycling. We need to start a composting program and continue to just start buying products with less packaging. And I have to say that both GSA and the district are already making great strides in this effort, so I think we're going to see a great improvement in this area very soon. And then, lastly, is green infrastructure. And what is green infrastructure? It's a connected system of parks and open space, vegetated areas. And basically, the idea is that it being connected vastly improves human health and ecological habitat. We have chosen to measure this concept in three ways. One through pervious, the amount of pervious surface. So we set a target of 35% in our area. Tree canopy, right now- Tree canopy, right now, only 8% of the area has tree canopy, so we want to shoot for 40%. And then a green area ratio. GAR is an indicator that the, the district is using now. And basically, it is a calculation that looks at the amount of, of tree canopy and permeable surfaces compared to the entire surface area. And so basically, .45 is, is a pretty aggressive target here, but I do think that we can meet it. At the building scale, this includes doing things like green roofs, edible rooftops, green walls, and rain gardens. And then employing it at the district scale, it's looking at corridors of tree canopies, using native vegetation, healthy soils, all the things that you would think of, and pervious areas, of course. So basically, I know that's a, you know, a quick recap. You heard a lot, you know, you heard more in May, and it certainly is in a lot more detail in the plan. What we then did was take this framework to inform the development pattern and the phasing of how things might occur, or how development might occur over time. And so I'm just going to quickly walk through that. Here we have the area today. And then first, you would probably start with your light rehab and full rehabilitation of buildings. So the buildings in the darker blue, there's, you know, there's four of them there. Those are the ones that we really think will be here for the long term and are worthy of, you know, larger investments, because there will be time for, to pay them back. You can see the central utility plant there, located south of the USDA building. And then there's the, the existing park spaces. We see that three buildings could possibly be repurposed over time. This means that they have the opportunity to expand in terms of maxing out to their building envelope. They could also change use and change ownership over time. And then we have infill. Infill can happen on vacant, underutilized sites here. This does not preclude any major redevelopment from happening, so it could happen first, and then the major redevelopment sites could follow. This actually is at the point where you would set up, start to set up your new street network. And then finally, you bring in the big moves, which are the big redevelopment sites, the Forestall site, and the big development that could happen over the freeway. And so here we have everything together, and we added in our solar canopy over the, the freeway as well. And so now, basically, I'm going to hand it over to Elizabeth. She's going to actually go into what all of this looks like in more detail within the focus areas.
So each of these topic areas that Diane just reviewed comprise either a development or an environmental system that, when we applied it to our study area, really helped to inform our revitalization scenario. And so Chapter Four of our plan lays out a lot of various site-specific and, or site-specific recommendations for both parcels and streets. And it's way too numerous to recap here today, so I'm just going to spend a few minutes highlighting what we believe to be some of the catalytic moves. To help us organize this, and help organize these site-specific recommendations into manageable projects as well as sort of a logical action plan, we've designated four focus areas, and that's how I'm going to organize this part of the presentation. The first is the 10th Street corridor in Banneker Park. We also have what we're calling Independence Quarter, which is between Independence and Maryland Avenue. The third is the Maryland Avenue corridor and Seventh, the Seventh Street corridor, which also includes Reservation 113 at the intersection of Maryland and Virginia avenues. And just to orient you, because those streets really don't exist, that's right here, that's Reservation 113. And lastly, the southwest freeway. And so I'm going to, actually, we've gotten, what I've done is taken shots of the model. So we've got the model here, which has really been an invaluable working planning tool. And I'm going to walk you through, again, those key recommendations. So that's all the areas together. This is a shot of the model that represents the existing conditions along 10th Street and Banneker Park. So 10th Street, this is on access with the Smithsonian Castle, and it runs under DOE, and then it actually is elevated across the rail tracks and the freeway terminating at Banneker Park. And this is a representation of the proposed development scenario. And the 10th Street proposal, the idea here is to create a prominent cultural corridor to serve both as a, really as a contemporary extension of the National Mall. And we're proposing to narrow the street down to a width closer to that of LaFonte Plan, and to improve this street to be a, really a multipurpose boulevard. This is a ground shot of what you see today, looking back towards the Smithsonian Castle. And this is how we begin to envision 10th Street, to be a prominent, densely green, mixed-use corridor that can extend the civic qualities of the National Mall and the Smithsonian museums and gardens down to the waterfront, but also a place that infuses the vitality of the city into the Monumental Core. So we envision this to be walkable, an active street with places to eat, learn, rest, and engage, to accommodate special events and exhibits, as well as daily life activities. And we also believe, as the sustainability spine of the district, that this area can exemplify state-of-the-art urban design and environmental practices that will reintroduce nature back into the city and increase public awareness about the functions of an urban eco-district. So at the southern terminus of the street, this is Banneker Park, which is about an eight-acre open space. Currently, it's an isolated, tree-lined plaza in this location with a fountain that, as I mentioned before, sits about 45 feet above Main Avenue. And it's bisected by several interstate ramps. So our proposal is to actually try to retain that central focal feature and use the topography here to help provide view sheds down towards the river. Because when you, when you reach this location, we really want people to feel like they've reached the Potomac River, that they're at the waterfront. And as the city's next cultural destination, the idea here is that we would line the freeway, which currently sits back here, with potential, with museum sites or cultural institutions or different kinds of learning facilities. And that would help buffer what could be a new signature landscape in this location. This site could be one major museum or memorial and a landscape, but we also believe that it could accommodate up to three to four museums and a memorial. So the, the range of what could happen here is quite extensive, and this is just one idea of how that could occur. This is an image taken from Main Avenue, looking back towards the Mall. You can see the Washington Monument in the background, looking at Banneker Park. And this image illustrates how a signature landscape in view of the Washington Monument could become both an identifiable feature of the eco-district, but also a southern gateway to the National Mall. Stairs, ramps, and garden terraces can provide commemorative opportunities at a lot of different levels. And this actually represents a structure that would be on access with 10th Street and the Smithsonian Castle. And here, we feel that by putting a major structure or feature, we can programmatically extend the idea of the Mall to this cultural site, and then actually use it as a pivotal point to connect you to the water and even on over to East Potomac Park. And what's, what's great about this, and we can use the elevation to our advantage, is that not only can we provide ground floor uses at Banneker, but we also can use the building to engage Main Avenue, to improve the relationship with the new development, the new Wharf development just to the south. This shot illustrates the Independence Quarter that I mentioned earlier, and it's a little bit probably hard to orient you here. So just to recap, Independence, this is the, where the train tracks go through. This is the proposed Maryland Avenue, 12th and 9th Street. 10th Street is here. And believe it or not, this site is about 19 acres, so it's quite large and highly So we believe that redeveloping this area is going to provide us the greatest opportunity to create a new walkable neighborhood that's going to help blur the boundaries between the local and federal city. And we can, in this location, we can reconnect the street grid, reestablish Virginia Avenue, build a new state-of-the-art Department of Energy headquarters, and still have quite a bit of space left to increase density for new housing, new offices, hotel, and even cultural uses. This is an existing shot of the Maryland Avenue corridor. We're looking from the Capitol towards the Jefferson Memorial. This would be the proposed Eisenhower Memorial Site, Reservation 113. And you can see where the rail line is depressed here. This is the, also the area that was the focus of this, the Office of Planning Small Area Plan, which actually was approved by the City Commission or City Council on June 26. And because these two projects are so intricately related, I felt it was important to kind of summarize those recommendations here. So this is the proposal for Maryland Avenue. And this can actually, we can actually deck the avenue by realigning and lowering the train tracks, and, that will accommodate double-stacked trains, as well as allow the opportunity to add a fourth track that's going to help maximize both commuter rail and freight rail through this corridor. And by establishing Maryland Avenue, we're really able to reconnect that street grid and develop these parcels that, right now, are just these kind of odd-shaped parcels along its edge. And we feel that because of their shape and configuration and location, that they should be prioritized for residential development. And we also have an, a great opportunity here to design the avenue to feature really a series of small urban parks that really will befit the Monumental Core. This is an image from the Small Area Plan. This image here in the upper right depicts the, kind of the idea of a park-like avenue. And you can kind of start to see how it would sit over the tracks, and in this particular location, it would deck over a portion of D Street. Both plans actually recommend making the VR, expanding the VRE station and making this a really significant intermodal hub in the city. And so we have the opportunity, this actually will allow us, give us the opportunity to take some of the pressure off of Union Station as well. So this is a view, if you're standing on the VRE platform, looking towards the Department of Energy. This is the Department of Energy here, and these are the three tracks. And the, the recommendation is to actually expand the number of platforms, improve vertical circulation, so that you can access both the commuter rail at the above, metro rail below, as well as the bus systems at the street level. And this starts to also show how we can start to kind of display the ideas of the eco-district. This is a solar canopy that we're proposing here. So we really want to use every opportunity to kind of strengthen sort of the interpretive vocabulary for the public to identify this as an urban eco-district. And I also would like to point out the long view towards the Washington Monument that we can reclaim when Virginia Avenue is reestablished as the Department of Energy is redeveloped. This is a view of Reservation 113, looking down Maryland Avenue towards the US Capitol. And we really believe that this area can kind, really become the, kind of the central heart of the eco-district. It can, centered on the intermodal hub, which is just over here in this location, it can be a signature urban square, as well as a neighborhood park. It can help support the transit activity in this area, provide flexible space for commemorative art, temporary art exhibits, as well as passive recreation opportunities. And lastly, this is the Southwest Freeway. This image is of those 10 lanes that I mentioned, has lots of access roads and ramps that really create a barrier between 10th Street or the National Mall 10th Street and Banneker Park. And the recommendation here is to deck the freeway, to develop this with air rights development, which will give us the opportunity to increase private development for additional housing, offices, even hotels, maybe other types of cultural institutions, perhaps. It allows us to improve connectivity through this entire area. And Diane mentioned solar canopies. Because of the, the incline of the, the freeway, we're proposing solar canopies that can help buffer the freeway from adjacent residential and office uses. So at the onset of this project, one of our objectives was to see if by using this district-scale approach, we can actually achieve greater results. And not only have we proven this to be true, but we, we really can't meet our sustainability requirements without doing this. And so I'd just like to kind of recap what we can achieve through this revitalization scenario. So these are kind of the neighborhood development stats. What we're able to do is retain and improve 7, 9 million square feet of federal office space. And if we improve the efficiency of that space, we actually believe we can accommodate up to 19,000 additional employees within that space. We have the opportunity to create a million square feet of additional office space, 1.000 million square feet of residential or hotel space. We can actually increase our cultural inventory by 1.2 million square feet that we think can accommodate anywhere between four and five museums. This plan also improves, or creates, 14.3 acres of new and improved parks that we believe could accommodate up to five memorial sites. It also recommends, as I said, reconnecting the street grid. And what's amazing is that we can actually create 17 new intersections by basically decking Maryland Avenue and putting in a street grid, the C Street and 11th Street. We also can expand the rail corridor and increase commuter capacity, not only for this area, but for the region. And the envi, the environmental results here are also very significant. So by planning at a district scale, we're actually able to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 51%. And by basically managing our stormwater better, we can reduce our potable water use by 70%. We can divert up to 80% of our waste from landfills. And as Diane mentioned, by transforming the federally-owned central utility plant into a highly efficient, and we can transform it into a highly efficient and financially successful energy model. So I'm going to turn this back over to Diane, who's going to wrap up to talk about how this makes economic sense and about our implementation strategy.
Okay, so it was not only important for us to show that these strategies yield significant sustainability improvements and that we could transform the character of this area, but they also make economic sense. So we performed a high-level economic analysis to evaluate the major investments, and these include the investments in open space and the major redevelopment projects and in the infrastructure. And it also evaluated the tangible and intrinsic benefits that we might receive from these investments. And over a 20-year horizon, it found that the benefits from the recommended improvements will likely outweigh the initial costs of investment. The federal benefits can be summarized as creating efficient workplaces, reducing lease space, reducing energy and water use and commuting, and costs associated with all of those things, reducing building operating expenses, and then, of course, generating land sale revenues. The District of Columbia benefits are incremental new tax revenue, sales, property, and transfer taxes, residential and employment growth, increased commuting capacity and reduced travel times, and reduced stormwater runoff entering the DC system, and also reducing our, our greenhouse gas emissions. And the private benefits, of course, are increasing net operating income of existing buildings, creating new residential, retail, and commercial real estate opportunities, creating a more vibrant, attractive, and desirable neighborhood, which in turn will increase property values as well. And then there are intrinsic benefits, the ones that are a little more difficult to quantify, preserves the National Mall by establishing new sites for cultural facilities, connects the National Mall to the waterfront, inspires district-scale sustainability at federal campuses and communities nationwide. We hope that this can be replicated. And establishes a high-quality employment center for a new generation of workers, and reduces river contamination and the area's carbon footprint. So to summarize, there's no doubt that the required investments in infrastructure, open space, and redevelopment of the buildings are significant. But the overall benefits to, over the long term, to the federal government, the district, to taxpayers, to property owners, to private sector, will likely outweigh the initial investment. This brings me to implementation. In many cases, the federal government, the city, or private sector will have the authority and funding to move certain projects forward. We've outlined five high-priority projects, three in the near term, and that's the streetscape improvements for 10th Street, the connection from Banneker to the waterfront, and a new business model for the central utility plant. And the two long-term, high-priority projects we see is the redevelopment of the Forestall complex and the decking of Maryland Avenue. We think that these can actually happen with the partnerships that are in place today. There are, however, as you, you know, as Elizabeth mentioned in the commission meeting in May, other areas where new funding tools and governance structures might be needed. This is for managing and paying for district-wide infrastructure projects, and coordinating the multiple modes of transportation activity at LaFonte Station, and coordinating the development activity within the eco-district to ensure that it's all, the private and public development is moving forward in the same direction and towards achieving our goals. So these types of efforts may require formal interagency agreements or even special legislation that would be specific for the Southwest Eco District. And so we see immediate next steps for implementation being developing a partnership agreement between the district and the federal government, creating a governance entity to provide district-wide coordination, financing, and management. And on that note, the Southwest business community is very excited about accelerating projects in this plan and is already undergoing due diligence for the establishment of a bid in this area. And coordinating regional transit investments, and this includes exploring the expansion of the Union Station redevelopment, corporations' authorities to include transportation planning at LaFonte Station. And while these get underway, NCPC is already committed to performing more detailed analyses on the stormwater system, the on the stormwater system, the district-wide solar array, and further economic analysis on the entire project. So just to give you a summary of what's happening over the next couple of months, as everyone has mentioned, we have a public meeting next week. We will be doing public outreach from now until early September. We will have task force review of the final report in November, and we will be back to you in January. And this winter, NCPC will also be starting that interim design streetscape for 10th Street and the Banneker Connection. And so with that, it is the Executive Director's recommendation that the commission authorize the circulation of the July 2012 draft Southwest Eco District Plan for a 60-day public comment period. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we conclude our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, very much. Ms. Miller, thank you. Very exciting plan, long time in coming, and I would now open it to commission members for questions and comments.
Would move, we accept the Executive Director's recommendation.
Okay, for discussion purposes, it's been moved and seconded, so it's properly before us.
I have some questions. One area, in front of the LaFonte Hotel, there's a large space there. I think it's got fountains, doesn't it?
Yeah.
But it's not.
It's a pyramid.
Oh, really? Really? I just think it'd be nice to be more, you know, usable by tourists and employees. And I don't think it's benches or grass or anything, but it's kind of a, almost like the Freedom Plaza, kind of barren. And I don't know if there's any thought about doing something about that or not. No negative comments on the Freedom Plaza, but it's kind of that kind of barren area.
Actually, that is under the jurisdiction of, it's privately owned under the jurisdiction of, yeah, JBG, so it's not part of our. However, we have met with the developers and they've actually been following our work. And I believe that, you know, eventually there will be, whenever we, when we begin the work on the 10th Street, streetscape, I'm sure that we'll have discussions about how those, how those two areas will start to interface. I do know that, at least in the past, a developer has indicated some desire to kind of redevelop that space.
Yeah, I feel like it's very useful, we could do something with it, make it more functional. Also, the river view you mentioned. I guess from the banner elevation, you can see the river.
You can or can't?
You can.
Yes.
It's possible, because obviously the buildings that are being put in for the Main Street development would block some of that, but with the height, you'd still be able to see it. Is that the Potomac River, or what is that? That's not the.
Technically, the Washington Channel.
It's the Channel. That's when you said Potomac, I said that's.
Well, you can see the river out beyond.
Yeah.
It's really part of the river.
Okay.
But not from the current elevation of the circle. With their new buildings, you'd have to, you have to be in a building or on top of a building to see over what they have proposed.
Well, there's, there's two views.
Even through the gap.
No, through the gap, you can see from, at a pedestrian ground level. You should be able to see through.
And, but not see water.
Yeah.
No.
You'll get a.
You need to look at the current plan.
Well, the street looks a little bit off.
That's going to make me mad if we don't see water.
Well, the gap, the gap that they showed doesn't show you can see the out.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, I just have seen more recent renderings of that, and that was a question that I had at the time, so I think maybe you want to take a look at that.
Okay, we'll follow up on that.
Yeah, because I mean, the river view is very nice to have that.
Yes.
Sense of that. And I was, and the trolley was once talked about coming into this area. Those tracks on Slide 56, where it tracks for a trolley?
On.
A little small for a rail.
Well, 7th Street, we, yeah, 7th Street corridor shows potential streetcar or trolley being able to go up that corridor.
Right.
From Main Avenue.
Because it was heading towards the monument, I think, and it wasn't heading up to 7th Street, that 56 that you showed.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But I'm just, I'm happy to see that. And you know, there's some controversy over the city about the trolley to start with, but I'm a believer that maybe we need to think about all that great connectivity, which could be good for us.
Yeah.
If we can get past some of the other issues. So that's trolley.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, there's, it's best, it's basically representing a bus lines, metro, you know, metro bus lines, circulator and streetcar.
But they had one photo that had the, on 56, that showed it, and it was just a single track, people on each side of it, which is like a trolley, jump off and jump on. It's not critical, I appreciate seeing it there, I guess, and hopefully we can connect it. Thank you.
Okay.
Great job, very, very impressive.
Thank you.
If somebody can write a check right away, we'd be rocking.
Mr. Gudney?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend Elizabeth and the staff at NCPC for their very hard work on this plan. I was part of the task force that, that has kind of been in from the very beginning, and I think that if anything, there are more opportunities today for this plan to be realized than we might have imagined when we started. And one of the important developments that's also unfolding is an announcement about an Amtrak and Union Station master plan expansion that I think will be happening the week of the 25th of July. And I think there's a very intimate connection between MARC and commuter rail service that could be expanded here at LaFonte, the LaFonte Station as part of this eco district plan and the capacity at Union Station to, to handle Amtrak and commuter rail service and really give us, between the two areas, a much more robust and, and intense multimodal connection that would really literally put lots more people and jobs within striking distance of the city, which I think would be a fantastic thing. So I just wanted to commend them on a really great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart, and then Mr. Preventia. Did you have some? Mr. Hart?
Yes, thank you. As a commission representative to the task force, it was my pleasure to watch this, this plan evolve. And I think it evolved in stages that really added layers of complexity and sophistication to what was originally a fairly simple challenge. The staff, the city, task force members, the public and the consultants all contributed, I think, to a plan which puts together a very holistic vision and a challenge for implementation. None of these things are going to be simple, but I think what it does, it pulls it all together in a way that, that really shows how all these pieces fit together and the total is much better than the sum of the parts. Thank you.
Mr. Preventia?
Also commend the staff for the analysis that's been done. On the high-level economic analysis, could you give us just even a rough order of magnitude? We know, for example, the Southwest waterfront, are we talking 2, 5, 10, $20 billion effort? Just, just to get a.
It's expensive and.
We touch that.
Yeah, let me, basically, the, when we, we have refrained from actually putting out a number right at the moment because our analysis was very high-level and it kind of rolled up a lot of cost without disaggregating really what it means. So it doesn't really paint a true picture, and that's why we're, we're basically confident as we go forward that, that the benefits are going to outweigh that cost. But here's the good news, we are, we actually have money in our budget and we're getting ready to start a more detailed economic analysis that will take those costs that we have, start to break them down and how they both impact and benefit all the key stakeholders, like the federal government, the District of Columbia, and the private property owners. So, you know, it's, it's probably in the magnitude of, of the waterfront development. And what's interesting, I just saw, I just read something yesterday where the square footage here that we're trying to develop and put forth, and the area is about twice as large as the, as the waterfront development.
Okay. So you want to continue to refrain at?
Yes, yes, I would like to, mainly because it just, it'll get blown out of proportion, and we feel that we really can give you a much better answer at the next level of analysis.
Couple of the comments, from time to time in these plans, we reference executive orders, which are sometimes come and go as we change administrations, they either get revoked entirely or modified or sometimes expanded. So just a cautionary tale that sometimes something that is an anchor requirement or a criteria or a code can be, can be removed. Couple of comments about the various strategies. One, the first, one of the first that jumped out at us is the very, and my comments are focused mainly on the sustainability aspect of it. Lead Platinum, very, very ambitious goal, far exceeding the goals of most of the federal agencies, which are at the silver level. Along with lead platinum comes some upfront costs, I can't remember exactly what, 4% additional upfront costs, as well as lifecycle maintenance costs. In fact, there's some studies now available in the literature that says if you don't maintain a lead-certified building, the costs of maintenance are higher than if it wasn't lead-certified in the first place. So I, I don't know, for example, if the current administration in the, in the district campaigned and was selected on the basis of expanding the investment in infrastructure, but without the investment, the commitment to, to invest appropriately as we modify the usages, there's some risk involved.
I think that, those are good points. I think that we, in terms of, you know, we see more and more private buildings here being built as lead platinum in Washington DC. And I think that the, you know, our assumption for the federal buildings, if there were to be new federal buildings here, that these are long-term investments that we're going to be around for a really long time, and that the cost of doing lead platinum is, and lead gold and lead platinum is now coming down, the more and more that people are doing it. So by the time these actually, we are building these, that this is definitely something that we should shoot for. The other thing, though, in this plan, though, too, is actually the idea of the block and district strategies, which we hope, and as we study more in terms of the economics, actually pan out in terms of, of, you know, creating great sustainability results without costing too much more money. So, and we can, we will be addressing that, too, in our further economic studies.
Okay. Solar energy, we commend you on exploiting solar energy, but the key component of the solar energy capacity capability is the storage system that goes along with the, with that. So sometimes there's additional expense, as well as the maintenance for those systems. Limited capacity, I think, for solar here in DC as our days get shorter. While it's ambitious, probably to put the panels conceptually over the freeway, that might be a, well, it might be entertaining to watch the maintenance, it might be also challenging to, to maintain a solar panel that bridges an active and wide expanse like the Southwest Freeway. Ground source heat, it was cited as a good source of heat, but as you mentioned, I think in the, in the plan, in the presentation, though, you also talked about the cooling aspects that you get. So it's, it's a double benefit. Is there any, with, with this area being close to the river, is there any consideration of using the river as a heat sink to further improve the efficiency of those?
Our consultants did look at that very early on and felt that it wasn't as realistic as some of the strategies that we ultimately put in the plan. So, but that, that definitely did come up very early on, and I know that some people have started to look at that elsewhere.
Sewer mining, I saw that was as another strategy. Is it, is it realistic, given the current level of investment in infrastructure, that that might be feasible in the future?
Again, when our consultants did the analysis, they felt that it was, it's important for it to be near residential development, so it sort of ultimately depends on how close, you know, and how much residential development goes in. And so that's where you would really take advantage of that opportunity. And it function, I mean, as, as you know, it's the same idea as ground source heat, you know, it's using that constant temperature already to start with. So if there is a concentration of residential development near the area in which, which what we've proposed, then yes, you know, it would be.
Sounds like what you're relying on heavily is the 2025-year.
Yes.
Target to either improvements in technology, political will, commitment of funds.
Yeah, and then, and looking at, you know, the cost-benefit analysis, again, it's over 20 years that we see it actually working.
Let's see, oh, it talked about, there's about, there's an energy strategy about shade and reflective structures. When I hear about reflective structures, I always think about who would the heat, who's gaining the heat that's being reflected? And if it's, if the entire district doesn't have, is not reclad with reflective structures, then you disradiate heat from a non-reflected, older building from a newer one. Any plans to how, how we would protect, if you will, adjacent non-reflective surface buildings from the heat gain from the adjacent newer buildings?
We did not look at it in that much detail, but I think that's a great suggestion, and we certainly can do that over the next couple of months as we take in the public comment as well.
Water strategy looks, I think I read something about water dust urinals, also a maintenance cost for those. Reuse of water, did it talk about using non-potable water within, inside buildings, which would require you to have two separate?
Dual plumbing.
Because, and dual plumbing is what, is one of the concepts that you?
Yeah, and that would be for new buildings, that, obviously.
Okay, then additional expense there to.
Yeah, you know, but I didn't, you know, we have looked, though, at the increase, I mean, the increasing cost of water here, too. So when you start to bring that in, again, over the next 20 years, it's not a small increase that we're going to be looking at, so.
Waste water, is that not already going to blue planes and?
It is, and they've just put, yes, it is going to blue planes, and they've just put in, I believe, the nation's largest anaerobic digester facility, which is pretty amazing. And there's, we couldn't compete with that in our, it just was not cost feasible for us to do something like that within this eco district, so.
Great briefing on that, information briefing a few months ago. On the, on the composting, based on our research, the facilities that handle composting for commercial facilities are not even in the national capital region, you have to go all the way to Delaware, so then you have the, the tipping and hauling fees. That's.
Yeah, and I just, and I don't know the details yet, but this is somewhere where we really would like to work closely with the district, because I know that they heard a lot about this through their sustainability planning, you know, their sustainability plan exercise as well. And so I know that we can, I'm confident that, you know, we can work with them to, to, you know, jump on board with their solution for that as well, you know, in USDA.
Again, leveraging the 25-year cycle, there might be.
I would, I think that, I don't know, Harriet, if you could, if you know more about this, but I think it's going to be happening a lot sooner than, you know, the next 20 years.
We actually got funds in the 2013 budget, so beginning on October, we'll be able to fund pilot projects and feasibility studies that are going to touch on some of these areas that we're discussing today.
Very good. Construction waste, the federal acquisition regulations at this time prohibit use of salvage materials. Is that consistent with what's envisioned in the plan? While we're encouraged to use materials that have high recycle content, use of salvage materials, at least for federal projects is.
Yeah, and we didn't.
Not permitted. Is that part of the governance structure and the change in regulations?
We definitely alluded to the best practices for the construction waste materials in the plan. I don't know if you, so we didn't go into quite that much detail in this plan, but recognize that those are the practices that need to be employed when, when these buildings get redeveloped.
Okay. Talked, the plan talks about almost 8 million square feet of federal office space, accommodating 19,000 employees. I just did the math quickly, and that's over 416 square foot per employee. Seems very, very generous. It's two to three times sometimes the standards of some of the federal agencies. Am I using the wrong numerator and denominator?
Yeah.
To arrive at that.
Yeah, because we were looking, and my consultant couldn't remind me the number, but I believe we were looking at like 200 and, 150 to 200 square feet, which is very generous on what GSA is currently striving for, which is like less than 100 square feet per person. So I'm not quite sure, I'll double-check those numbers. We came up with different, different calcs.
Okay. Let's see, I think it wasn't, there's a minor inconsistency in the plan about the new intersections. In one place it says 17 and as, another place it says 11, which is, I think, what you covered.
Yeah.
Concerned about if we make this a drivable zone, people will drive there, as opposed to only having emergency vehicles, garbage trucks, delivery vehicles, commercial taxis, that type of thing. How are we going to maintain the walkability? I think I heard early on, we want to make this the healthiest, most walkable, greenest city in the US.
Looking at the transportation analysis that was done, we don't really believe that this development is going to really generate that much more vehicular traffic. It will probably generate a lot more transit traffic or capacity needs. And of course, by opening, by creating that grid, we're going to provide a lot more maneuverability, a lot more mobility within this area. But I think those streets can handle it, just like any other, it really distributes the cars throughout the city in a better way. But we're really, really connecting the grid to improve pedestrian mobility.
Okay. Final comment had to do with optimal uses of these lids that go over freeways. One that we would recommend, I'm sure you probably have studied a little bit, there's a, in Seattle, the I-90 corridor, they put a 20-acre park at a place called Mercer Island, that's a, that's a suburb. And it was, because of the structural loading, it was, it's much cheaper than putting an ocu- than putting an occupied space, and that it provided the same buffer and lowered the pollution and so forth. So, would recommend further reference, that's a good benchmark, that 20-acre park.
That's a good example, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proventia. I would also like to compliment and thank the staff for all their hard work on this and the consultants as well, and the members of the task force and so on. I mean, there are a lot of hands involved in this, and it's been a lot of work. And I appreciate the fact that we've gotten it this far, and it's, and it looks very good at this point. I would just want to note a couple of things. You know, the majority of the impact of this plan is really focused on buildings, but certainly there are a couple of key pieces of parkland that are involved, Reservation 113 to one extent, and of course, Banneker Circle. And we're very interested in seeing how this unfolds. I can't say that every idea that's been explored for both of those sites are completely palatable, but it's very early in the process, and we're just, we're actually, I think, quite anxious to see what can come from it, and optimistic that it will be very good things, not that it's going to be easy or uncomplicated, because we never do anything easy and uncomplicated. But we'd like, we're glad to see something happening. I'm also very happy, or we're also very happy, that a couple of issues that are near and dear to our hearts are being addressed. Water, in particular, water retention and reuse, which is very important to us, and by the way, we're still looking for some additional water to help water the lawn over at the mall. We don't have too much capacity in the existing cisterns, but, you know, if you've got some water to get rid of and you've got some money to build some cisterns, maybe GSA, maybe the district, I don't know. You know, we, we got some room underneath, we can hold the water and we can use it. And the other topic is buses, which is a shared issue, and we're eager to look at every potential creative solution to try to address the bus issue. So, indeed, we will meet on it soon. So, that's what I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any additional comments or questions? Ms. Wright?
I just wanted to, since you just reminded me about the Harriet's bus parking issue.
I'm glad you call them Harriet's buses.
Yeah. This is her issue, I said, it's her issue.
Oh, it's her issue, oh. She keeps calling them our buses.
Mine has been Banneker Park on this trip that's been the Southwest Eco District, and I want to thank you for indulging me. I was jotting one note on what about Banneker, and I really was glad to see it receive the attention that it did in the final draft, and particularly in the implementation plan, pushing it up in the order of issues to be addressed. Because I have always believed that it is the linchpin to the entire problem, because it does present such a vexing urban design problem. And we've sort of moved away from the one vision, which was the sort of Spanish Steps idea, and there are a bunch of ideas presented for it, which I appreciate. And the other thing that I think is worth noting is that you hit just the right tone, I think. It's really easy to get so out there and get your Buckminster Fuller on and be incomprehensible to the public, and, or be very banal and not very imaginative. And I think this, the plan in its final draft really hits just the right place and pushes people to imagine and think hard and stretch, but not so much that they say, oh, those people at NCPC are out to lunch, and nothing will ever happen. So, I want to note that, and thank you.
Well, thank you.
And I also promised Bill that I would say something nice about the plan, and since he's my boss now, I know which, where my bread is buttered.
Do you have additional comments, please? Parks, I think I read in the current plan, there's 14.3 acres, and you plan to double that, I just missed that, though, where those would go in the.
No, actually, there's just, basically, there's just, I don't have the exact number of what's existing, but the 14.3 represents improving the existing parks, plus adding, there's a couple of new park places that we can create with this redevelopment plan. So, that 14.3 is the total.
We're just trying to reconcile, because part of the plan, it talks about capturing and using all of the rainwater, but also talks about increasing the amount of pervious surfaces, plus parks, I'm just trying to figure out all the factors in that equation.
Pervious is parks, pervious is roofs, you know, roof, right, as well as bio-retention and rain gardens.
Okay. Combination of all those. And the last point was on the transportation, I think it was the Maryland Avenue study where you were going to raise and depress some tracks.
Yes.
I noticed that VRE and Womatt are not members of the task force, but they have participated in our, on board, at least conceptually?
Yeah, they were actually on our working group, so they were involved, and attended, at least Womatt attended almost all of our meetings.
Thank you.
I just wanted to echo Commissioner Wright's comments about tone and readability, and it really struck me as sort of a newer member and the at-large member of your ability to convey that this could really be a district, not just a, sort of a place where there are buildings. And coming from the outside every month, it really was striking to me how well you captured what's there and what could be, and the quality of the graphics as well. So, I mean, it's a really easy plan to read, and I think you said it so perfectly, it's not banal, and it really strikes that balance that it's accessible to the public, and so I really commend you for that. And I'm very curious to hear how your public meeting goes next week and see how folks respond, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sensing no additional public commission comment or questions, the EDR has been properly moved and seconded as before us, so all in favor of the EDR as presented, which would put this to public comment, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, no. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much, and we look forward to bringing this back to you as a final document.
Yes, ma'am. I think we're going to swap, are we going to swap this out? Elizabeth, are we going to move this?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, now, let's just pause for just a second while we change exhibits.
Can I get the Washington mine? I just cracked.
Six.
Six.
On the calendar, it's on our website, it said the sixth.
Yeah, they're in.
Did it again. September the 6th is the first Thursday.
Okay, so, because I have to wait for Labor Day. So, Labor Day is Monday, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, good. So, today's the day.
Agenda item 5B is the preliminary site and building plans for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Center, Memorial Visitor Center, and we have Ms. Hirsch, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The National Park Service, on behalf of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund, has submitted preliminary site and building plans for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Visitor Center. The center will be located on a portion of the Lincoln Memorial grounds, within the boundary of the National Mall. This site was approved by this commission and the Commission of Fine Arts in 2006. The site is bound by Constitution Avenue on the north, Henry Bacon Drive on the east, Lincoln Memorial Circle to the south, and 23rd Street on the west. It's directly across the street from the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. There's an existing food service kiosk that was approved by this commission in 2005 on the south side of the site. In the northeast corner, there is a ball field. The remaining portion of the site is an open lawn panel surrounded on the perimeter by trees. Here you can see some existing conditions on the site, looking south towards the Lincoln Memorial. Here's the existing food kiosk, and this is looking down the sidewalk along Henry Bacon Drive. This photo is looking north towards Constitution Avenue. You can see the American Pharmacist building in the background there. To provide some background on the project, Congress authorized the visitor center in 2003 with special legislation, and that legislation specified that the visitor center would be built underground, that the visitor center would be considered a commemorative work, subject to the Commemorative Works Act, that the center could be cited within the reserve without any additional approvals, that the size of the visitor center would be limited to what is necessary to educate the public about the Vietnam Veterans Memorial and the Vietnam War. And the legislation also amended the Commemorative Works Act to allow NCPC and CFA to develop site-specific design guidelines that were mutually agreed upon. In 2006, as I mentioned, NCPC approved what was known as Site A, the current project site, that was conditioned upon implementation of mitigation that was described in NCPC's Fonzie. The mitigation consisted of 14 design guidelines, as well as an additional mitigation measure that was related to the potential loss of recreational space on the site. In 2007, CFA and NCPC both reviewed an initial concept design, and then in the spring of 2009, both commissions reviewed revised concept design. More recently, February of 2012, CFA approved the design, and then in March of 2012, the design was presented to NICMAC. In 2007, when this commission saw the design, the underground facility was centered around a sunken courtyard, it's right here. In addition, there were long linear skylights that extended into the landscape. The concept of a courtyard was introduced in order to get light and air into the facility, thereby reducing any need for air intake grails or other kinds of mechanical equipment that would typically be necessary for a building like this. The building was to be accessed off of Henry Bacon Drive or Constitution Avenue with sloped walkways. And here you can see a photo rendering of that design. The commission commented at that time that they were concerned about the visibility of the Lincoln, the visibility of the center from the Lincoln Memorial, as well as the surrounding streets, and also the impact that the courtyard and the skylights had on the landscape. And the commission recommended that the applicant reduce the size of the building and also in order to reduce the intrusions on the landscape. When the applicant returned to this commission in 2009, they had made a series of modifications to the design. They were proposing at that time to raise the grade of the site by approximately three feet. That helped to simplify the design of the ramp. They also moved the building north on the site, and were proposing to use a grass berm to decrease the visibility of the building. At that time, the commission found that the design had improved and was consistent with approximately half of the design guidelines, but that the commission asked for the applicant to eliminate the walkway, the skylights that extended into the landscape, and to also reduce the size of the courtyard and the guardrails that were proposed. So, here on the right, you see the site plan as it is proposed today. The applicant has been working to address the commission's comments, and also has completed the NEPA and Section 106 processes. In response to the commission's comments, this walkway from Constitution, as you can see, has been eliminated. The concept of a courtyard has been retained, however, now it is being, a green roof is being used to cover portions of that courtyard. In addition, a horizontal rail condition has been designed along the edge of that green roof right here, and also along the edge of this retaining wall. In addition, the approach to the visitor center has been reconfigured only to be off of Henry Bacon Drive from this curvilinear ramp that will bring one down into the center. The applicant is still proposing to raise the grade approximately by three feet. You can get a better idea of what the approach to the center would be like off of Henry Bacon Drive. Visitors can either approach from the curved walkway that will be elliptical green area in the middle of that walkway that will be also bermed, and that is to decrease the visibility of the center from the surrounding sidewalks, or take the stairway down to the entrance, which is right here. There's a skylight here to provide additional light into the entry vestibule. And then you also see that horizontal rail condition here along the edge of the green roof, and along this condition here, it would be low-growing evergreen shrubs. And then here is the courtyard opening. The architect has designed a detail that's known as a ha-ha, that I'll describe in a bit more detail, to protect the opening. Views from the bottom of the ramp right here indicate, this also gives you an idea of the materials that are being proposed for the center. Slate walls would, are here, granite benches, as well as the stairway, and then the walkway itself would be pre-cast concrete. This view is showing at the bottom of the entry stair what the view would be. So, a little more detail on that horizontal rail condition along the edge of the green lawn. When one is standing on that green lawn, there'll be a low concrete curb. The horizontal rail would consist of a concrete structure with a metal frame and tension wires. This is to provide a warning to anyone who may be approaching that edge, that there's an edge condition, and it would not be a walkable surface. And then the ha-ha detail around the courtyard opening, essentially, that is a low concrete curb here with an space to a higher concrete wall that would be capped with a guardrail. However, that concrete, the top of that concrete wall will be flush with the lawn, and so any kind of visibility from the Lincoln Memorial would be, would be very minimal. As far as the landscape design, recommendations from the Lincoln Memorial Cultural Landscape Report would be implemented. Essentially, trees, rows of trees would be planted along the perimeter. A few trees will be removed, however, in the end, approximately 20 more trees will be planted on the site than currently exist. And I wanted to note that the trees here on the south end of the site. So, staff's analysis of the project focused on the response to the commission's comments from 2009, as well as the consistency with the design guidelines. In this chart here, you can see the commission found the project consistent with approximately half the design guidelines in 2009, and so the remaining portion of the presentation will focus on how the design is now consistent with the design guidelines that it was inconsistent with in 2009, and also where there was more information needed. So, Design Guideline 1 stated that the visitor center would be constructed underground and that no portion of it would be visible from the Lincoln Memorial or from the surrounding streets and view sheds. As you can see from this photo rendering, only a small portion of the horizontal rail and the ha-ha detail here would be visible. In addition, these red dash lines indicate where, after the trees that I pointed out in the landscape plan would be planted, and they fill out their canopy, they would also screen these two elements. This is a view from Constitution and 23rd, the center would not be visible. And then a view from Henry Bacon Drive, the top of the horizontal rail would be minimally visible. So, based on the revisions the applicant has made in terms of removing the skylights and the walkway, the visibility of the center from the Lincoln Memorial, as well as the surrounding streets, has been greatly reduced, and staff believes it's now consistent with this design guideline. In 2009, there were two design guidelines related to the lighting of the center that the commission did not have enough information to evaluate. At this time, the applicant has submitted information that the center will be lit to the minimum necessary for public safety, security, and maintenance, and therefore, from these renderings, you can see that any light that would exist would from these renderings, you can see that any light that would exist would be fairly minimal and would not interfere with the surrounding monuments or streetscapes, and that the lighting from the street and also the surrounding buildings would be more dominant than the lighting of the center itself. In 2009, the, this design guideline pertains to the center's intrusion into the landscape that no protrusions, including skylights, monitors, or light wells, would be visible. As you can see from the two site plans, the plan that's proposed today is more compact and does not interrupt the landscape as much as the one that was proposed in 2009. By eliminating the walkways the commission requested, as well as the skylights, and incorporating the use of this elliptical green bermed area, the visibility of the center has been minimized. And here's a view that, of the design that, as it was proposed in 2009, from Constitution, you would have seen much more of that retaining wall. And then as is proposed today, the view, although would be visible, would be the top of the horizontal rail here along the edge of the green roof. Design Guideline 10, related to any new pedestrian crossing points that would be added as a result of the project. At this time, no new pedestrian crosswalks are proposed. The Park Service has stated that the existing crosswalks along Henry Bacon Drive here, as well as on Constitution, would be sufficient to serve the center, and that if, in the future, after the center's open, if any additional crosswalks are needed, they would return to the commission with that proposal. Design Guideline 13 related, stated that the visitor center would not impede the use of the site for multipurpose recreation. In 2009, based on the design of the center, a smaller area on the south side of the site was available. However, today, based on the modifications that have been made to the design, there are two larger areas that are available for multipurpose recreation. It's approximately 26 percent of the site, and so therefore, staff is recommending that this is now consistent with, the design is now consistent with this design guideline. Design Guideline 14 stated that the center would be designed without guardrails or perimeter security elements. 2009, based on the size of the courtyard, there was an extensive system of guardrails that was proposed, because we're going to extrude up from the ground plane and be vertical elements. As I mentioned, a key part of the design as it exists today are these horizontal rail elements that are minimally visible from the surrounding monuments and the street. As far as perimeter security, the park police have conducted a threat assessment and determined that three bollards would be necessary here at the top of the sidewalk along Henry Bacon Drive, primarily to prevent an errant vehicle from being able to enter down the stairway and, or also enter somehow off of 23rd Street. In addition, the center has been designed to accommodate any kind of security screening that would be needed for visitors on the interior and the lobby. And then as far as the additional mitigation measure that was included in NCPC's Fonzie at the time of site selection, this required the Park Service to identify an additional site for recreational purposes within a half mile of the project. This point, the site that's been identified is south of Independence Avenue, just west of the MLK Memorial. In addition, there, because of the way the site has been redesigned and the design modifications, there's additional recreational space actually available on the project's site itself. So overall, the design modifications that have been made since the commission last saw this project in 2009 have greatly improved the project and reduced the impact to the landscape, as well as reduced the visibility of the center from the surrounding memorials and monuments. As I mentioned, the Park Service has completed NEPA, as well as NCPC. Both agencies have issued Fonze's, and the Section 106 process has concluded with memorandum of agreement. So therefore, at this time, staff feels the project has addressed all of the commission's concerns that were provided in 2009, and also satisfied the design guidelines. I should note that the staff report included in your materials for the meeting today included analysis against all of the, or the 14 design guidelines. So with that, it is the executive director's recommendation to approve the preliminary site and building plans for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Visitor Center, and notes that the applicant has addressed the commission's comments provided in June of 2009, and also note, finds that the design of the visitor center meets the design guidelines included in the Fonzie at the time of site selection, and that is, notes also that as a condition of the Section 106 MOA, additional consultation would occur over the courtyard opening, the skylight over the entrance, the development of the landscape, and the night lighting of the visitor center. That concludes.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Is there, are there questions for Ms. Hirsch or comments on the EDR from commission members? Mr. Proventia.
Appreciate you addressing, in turn, each of the 14 design guidelines and show how much progress. Some of our concerns remain safety. Did you indicate that there, also on the 23rd Street side, there are some bollards that would prevent vehicles from coming in from that side and going into the courtyard?
There won't be any bollards on the 23rd Street. I was just, the "ha-ha" detail that around the courtyard opening.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm struggling just a little bit with the three-foot, six-inch change in the topography. For example, is that immediately adjacent to the center courtyard so that there's a, there's a change in elevation that would discourage, I'm trying to think of the recreational activities that are immediately adjacent.
No.
Both to the courtyard as well as to the entrance.
Sorry. The change in grade would be very gradual. It would, from, the low point is Constitution Avenue.
Right.
Which is about 18 feet, and it would slope up from there to, I think the highest point it would be, would be about 22 feet.
What I'm trying to wrestle with is if you have an active sports activity going on immediately adjacent to the courtyard, even with those low guardrails, we still have some danger. However, the, the low-growing evergreen shrubbery that's on, is it on the south end of the, close to the entrance?
Mm-hmm.
Provides a sufficient buffer to keep people away from the guardrail.
Mm-hmm.
Are those recreational field facilities just impromptu? Are they going to be set up as a soccer field or a baseball dime, is that type of thing?
Right. No, those fields will be just open recreational for passive recreation. There won't be any assigned sporting activity.
Okay. That remains our only concern about the, the project, just the, the safety.
I think the applicant has made a lot of improvements and addressed a lot of the comments that were made by the commission, and I'd like to move the EDR.
It's been, the EDR's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments? Mr. Miller.
Yeah. I agree, there have been a lot of improvements, and I appreciate you going through each of the commission's previous recommendations and how, how much progress has been made in addressing each. I just had one question on the Fonzie. It said that the, an additional mitigation measure would be the establishment of a ball field west of the MLK.
Mm-hmm.
But weren't they already, weren't there already existing ball fields there? So, I, so, or was that, or was a new ball field established?
You're correct. Those are existing recreational fields, but I think that the Fonzie was indicating that recreational space be identified by the Park Service, not that they actually reconstruct a new field.
I think there's actually going to be some reconfiguration that was, that'll make more playing fields readily available, but I'm not, I don't know the details of it. I mean, there, those were different, those fields have been used for different purposes over the years.
Right.
And we do adapt them occasionally.
It just seemed to me that the mitigation measure was calling for a new or an additional field, because I guess that there's, even though there is more recreational space in this design than the previous design, I don't know if it's big enough, it doesn't appear to be big enough for a softball field, so.
Right. We had stopped using that field for, for softball some time prior to this, before the, this project was proposed. I mean, there really is, there's no extra land to be found in that area unless we wanted to start cutting down trees to put in softball fields, or take out golf courses.
No.
We tried that once, actually, and that didn't go over very well.
Right. I wasn't suggesting.
Yeah.
I just was.
Right.
I was just curious about a mitigation measure using existing, as opposed to new to replace, so that was just my only comment.
Mr. Dennis.
What is a "ha-ha" condition?
It's a term that the architect has defined as that condition around the courtyard opening. If we can get the, it's, it's not a technical architectural term, though.
It, this is something that goes back to medieval times. It's the, you know, the, the idea that you have a, a wall that you cannot see from a distance, and so the grass, you know, the, the landscape slopes down to the wall, and the wall is there, and it's a barrier, but, you know, if you're a storm in the castle, you don't realize until you get very close that you're now in the middle of a field and, oops, there's a wall there.
So you want to pass the laugh test, I guess.
You've been fooled.
Thank you.
Anything else? What's been moved and seconded, the EDR before you, medial before you has been moved and seconded. All in favor of passing the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Propose no? It's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Hirsch.
Perhaps a better name might be the "aha" wall.
Agenda item 5C is really a continuation from discussion last time. As we left it last time, we had received public comment and had returned the discussion to the, to the commission for deliberation. We all know that public comment participation has been critical, integral, very important to this project to date, so we will not take further public comment today since it's, it's, it rests with us at this time. Last month, when we deferred it for one month, there were really two issues that were really at hand. One was around the solar array, the photovoltaic array that was on the top of the parking garage, and then there were some questions and the need for additional information on stormwater management for both state and federal, that is Maryland, and federal regulations. So that's probably where most discussion, perhaps all of the discussion will be now, and to set it up, we have Mr. Hinkle. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and good afternoon. What you should have received is a supplemental analysis from staff in terms of stormwater, and what I wanted to do is take a few moments to summarize that, those regulations, and then I'll hand the floor over to Mr. Manselman, who represents the applicant, and he'll be describing in more detail how the project is meeting those requirements, as well as how the applicant has been working with the community over the past month. So to begin with, federal properties in Maryland have to follow two requirements for stormwater management. The first is to comply with Section 438 to the Energy, Independence, and Security Act, which is known as ESA. And ESA also requires that federal facilities comply with state and local requirements. And the state, and the state requirements are defined by regulations of the Maryland Department of the Environment, which through EPA regulations implements requirements of the Clean Water Act for federal facilities to obtain permits to control water pollution. And then as a side note, the state guidelines include performance measures that actually vary by the county, but Montgomery County does not have separate requirements from the state. And so what's the difference between ESA and MDE requirements? ESA requires federal agencies to use site planning, design, construction, and maintenance strategies to maintain or restore the pre-development hydrology of the property to the maximum extent technically feasible, and the EPA has provided guidance to help agencies establish appropriate performance goals and determine what is technically feasible. For MDE, the requirements for federal redevelopment projects are defined in Maryland's Stormwater Management Guidelines for State and Federal Projects, and these require, these federal redevelopment projects to detain and treat the first inch of stormwater on impervious surfaces to the maximum extent practicable, and to reduce impervious surfaces on the site. So Mr. Manselman will be speaking in detail about how the project meets Maryland's stormwater requirements, so I'm really going to focus my next couple of slides on how this project is in compliance with ESA. So EPA's guidance on ESA provides two options for calculating the amount of stormwater to be used in determining performance standards for sites. Option one is really to prevent off-site discharge of rainwater from all events less than or equal to a 95th percentile storm. Option two is to develop an estimate of pre-development conditions and then limit runoff volume and peak flow discharges to levels that do not exceed pre-development conditions. However, the guidelines recognize that in the context of redevelopment projects, that fully detaining the 95th percentile storm or restoring pre-development hydrology could be different, difficult to achieve due to some existing conditions on the site. So therefore, the guidance actually recommends using a systematic, maximum extent technically feasible analysis once a performance standard is determined for the site. So this is a graphic from the guidance document that depicts pre-development and post-development hydrology. And if you actually look on the, on the lower graphics, the first one shows a pre-development condition, and then the second is, of course, a post-development condition. If you note, in terms of stormwater and what falls onto the ground, there's a significant amount that evaporates, and a significant amount that infiltrates into the ground, with a limited amount of runoff on the pre-development site. And then, of course, in the post-development site, you may have a condition where you still have a lot of evaporation, but you have limited infiltration into the ground, and then that's a significant amount of runoff. So as you can see, existing site conditions can influence the amount of runoff of a site and may limit the ability to do onsite stormwater management for redevelopment projects. And so the guidance really does recognize this factor. So what the guidance has is a process to develop stormwater management plans. So the first step is to use option one or option two to determine the performance standard for the site, and that, again, is how much water is required to be retained under ESA. The second step is to use green infrastructure, low-impact development design strategies, really to the maximum extent technically feasible, to meet that performance standard. So these design strategies, of course, and we saw a lot in the previous presentation, include rain gardens or bioretention facilities, or porous pavements, or green roofs and the like. The third step is to document why some of these strategies are not technically feasible, and within the package, the supplemental information, you should have received a copy of a memo from the applicant that actually describes some of the green infrastructure, low-impact development design strategies that they feel cannot be used at this site. And then the last step is to determine and design appropriate runoff control measures if the performance standard cannot be met. So then, according to step one, the ESA performance standard for the ICCB North Campus Site is to retain 1.7 inches of stormwater in a 24-hour period. So after going through the remaining steps to determine what was technically feasible, the applicant actually designed a system that increases impervious surfaces, adds underground storage vaults, and uses one bioretention facility. And so the system detains, actually, 2.1 inches of stormwater, and then systematically treats and controls its release. And I just want to note that the system is actually larger than that two-inch capacity because it can actually manage a 25-year storm, which is over six inches of stormwater over a 24-hour period before overflowing. And this is simply because as the rain falls, water is actually concurrently passing through the system and then leaving the system. So because of all this, staff does find that the proposed detention treatment and controlled release of the stormwater at the site does meet the ESA requirements. With that conclusion, what I would like to do is invite Mr. Manselman up, who will speak in more detail as to how the project meets the Maryland stormwater requirements, as well as his work with the community over the past month. And he'll also talk a little bit about how the applicant proposes to address the off-site stormwater runoff. So if you could hold questions until afterwards.
Yeah. Mr. Manselman, welcome, and we very much appreciate your diligence.
Sir, thank you very much. My thanks. I'll operate the technology.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks to the Commission for this opportunity. And what I wanted to do is come back, as Commissioner Dixon had asked us to do, engage with the community. So I'm going to go through this, really, if you think of it in two parts. Where we were, based on our design 30 days ago, and then the engagement with the community that we've done over the last 30 days. And we did, sir, just exactly as you'd asked. I am the executive agent for the intelligence community, working on this project. And if you recall, and have been frankly working with the community since last December, because when we brought the master plan to you at that time, there were concerns there. And my way of addressing concerns as a licensed architect, is I listen to my client, kind of see what their concerns are, and then work through solutions that address those concerns. I'm not a civil engineer. I basically went to school with the civil engineers. And so what I want to do is talk, refresh on the impervious pervious, MDE, how we really exceed that in a few areas. And MDE is a strict criteria. There was a discussion a little bit about retention and detention, and what that means, and how detention is helpful on the site as well. And then talk about the community engagement. And then last, the PV panels, which I think we've addressed that as well. This is the existing site, and what I want to call your attention to is, basically, the Phase 1 site is up here at the north end of the property, and it's almost 100% asphalt surface right now. So there is a lot of runoff of that site. And the design by itself improves that. So everything you see there in light green is now pervious surface, landscape surface that was asphalt before. So we actually reduced by 40% the amount of impervious surface to the site. MDE. MDE does have strict requirements, and I may actually practice architecture in California for a considerable amount of time. And environmentally, California can be very difficult as well. But I would say MDE has their strict requirements. It was important to us, and important to me, is representing the owner on the site, that we do better than the standards. And in that case, there are four areas where we exceed MDE requirements. On the top one there, MDE would require us to look at, if you recall the previous drawing, that we collect in the areas that were impervious only. So if you think of the top of the parking garage, and the drives into it, and the visitor center, that's all we were required to do. We chose to take the entire site, impervious and pervious, and design our system around the total. So if you go to line two there, we actually built the capacity, actually increased the capacity, not quite, but almost threefold what MDA required us. And the importance of that, I'll show you in a minute when it comes to detention, what we can do to help not only the site, the neighboring streams, but also the water quality downstream as well. It was mentioned before, and I think Jeff hit on this, is that in a rainfall, they ask you to treat the first flush, which is basically that hard rainfall hits a parking service, automatically picks up the oil residue off that, and is generally the first to go. We actually do it for 2.1 inches. So we have an additional factor there of really 100%. And then lastly, MDE asks us to do, design to a 10-year storm. We're designed to peak flow a 25-year storm. So if you recall, in the master plan, we kind of discussed this and looked at it, and that was our target. We actually have now achieved our target based on the size of the detention structure. This is the storm event data for, and as Jeff mentioned, the 6.11 inches is your 25-year storm. Mother Nature does different things. And when you ask a civil engineer, and believe me, I asked several of them, you know, the size of the structure, and can you do this, and can you do that? Even if you take the case of a 100-year storm, and it's a 24-hour period, and it's only one inch more, this complex will really can, you know, depending on how that water spread over the number of hours, can actually take care of that as well. But it is designed to the peak flow of the 25-year, which is our target based on the plan design. Now, this isn't as great as the graphics on the eco area and the district and all that, which were very well done. But having three kids myself, and being the oldest of seven kids, this was the best analogy I had. And so if you think about retention, and retention was talked about, and I think a couple of the speakers last time talked to that, retention would be like a reservoir on the site, be it one that's permanently filled with water, or one that fills with water, and then eventually it either evaporates or drains into the soil. And that would be with the plug in the tub. Detention, though, also has a value. And the value here is, you know, and I was a little kid, I used to do this, but, you know, turn on the water faucet as fast as it would go, leave the plug open, and see if you could fill the tub. Now, I'm an architect, so I do crazy things like that. But in this case, what's happening here, and what the value to the neighboring streams, is that we have a controlled outflow on this project. So we're detaining 250,000-some gallons. At the same time, we're able to control the outflow to a smaller amount. Again, erosion's caused by volume and velocity. So if we control that outflow, and additionally, it gives us the opportunity to treat the water. So the water leaving this site is treated, so that helps the water quality down the watershed of the Potomac and on into the Chesapeake itself. So this is, on the left, if you look over here, and it's done by, there we go, it's done by the different rainfall amounts, and then you see existing, as it is today, and then proposed, you see that the gallons per minute are greatly reduced, and generally in the case, anywhere from 40%, really 50% plus or minus less than the current conditions. So that reduces the volume, and all that water that's coming out of there is treated. Now, on the Commission hearing on the 7th, sir, you asked us to engage with the community, and that was the motion of the Commission, or the motion in action of the Commission the last time. And so immediately the next day, Mr. Berg engaged with him and Mr. Sallop. Mr. Sallop was very interested in the PV panels, which I'll talk about in a minute. Mr. Berg was very interested in the water and stormwater runoff. I felt the best way to do that was just like the master plan. I went to them on the 8th, and I said, "Well, could you craft some questions of things that you would want me to look at and work with, with the design team, of what we could do?" We got that at the beginning of the following week, and I worked through that with the engineering team. And then on the 21st of June, we hosted a meeting at the site with the community, the community leaders, the county, NCPC, as well as the National Park Service attended that. And we discussed the issues, and out of that came four prime discussion points. One was the adequacy of the north channel, and that, the north channel is where the north end of the site will go into. And basically, it was a look at, okay, does this, you know, based on our design, do we improve the dynamics and the operations of that channel? And we believe we have that taken care of and solved and designed to that. And not only that, but improve the flow in the channel by changing the discharge point. And the other thing, and I'll answer part of this upfront, is that one thing we talked about, okay, how do we ensure that? And in my letter of commitment to them is, we're going to be on the site for the next four years. This part of the project to actually be completed in 12 months. So we'll have the opportunity to work with the Park Service and periodically go out there, look at how the performance of the design is working, and if there's anything we need to adjust, we're there to do it. But I'm convinced, based on the efforts of our civil engineers, that we're improving the overall situation, reducing, as I showed, the volume of water, as the velocity as well. Because when the velocity comes out, it goes into a drop. So in other words, it comes out your pipe, goes into a larger pipe, which reduces your speed and velocity, or hydraulics of water coming down the hill. The second bullet there, they talked about the north discharge and moving it further down the hill and closer. Now, we're going to do that design, take a look at it, and then we're going to bring it back to the community and our partner in the MPS to make sure, because one of the things, if you recall in the master plan, we're trying to preserve is every tree possible, moving the garage, realigning the garage. If, I don't want to do this if I'm going counter to that and start removing trees that we were trying to preserve before. So I'm going to bring that back to the community, that design to discuss. The Phase 1 site is limited, it's less than a third of the overall project. So additionally, in working with the community, we're going to, and as we go to the Phase 2, which is the balance of the site, we're going to work on design solutions that increase the retention and environmental site opportunities, like bioponds and things like that. And we even talked about the cistern for gray water, because I have more opportunity in that Phase 2. In the Phase 1, we basically have a parking garage and an entry, and it's a small portion of the site. And then last, was sharing the MDE submittals. I have here on my slide mid-July, those submittals were actually provided to MDE on Tuesday, and were also delivered to MPS and to the community. So that actually occurred before the brief here today. So the solution, and, you know, we talked through this, but the best solution, given the collective group that was there, as we discussed through it, is, if you recall, I did a commitment letter on the design of the project overall, and was then to amend a supplemental to that that addressed the stormwater management and also the PV panels. And that's what we collectively arrived at as the best solution. I prepared that document and sent that out to the community on the 6th, along with copies to NCPC and MPS as well. And then, my understanding, and I saw the communication from the community to NCPC that they supported that effort, it's my commitment to all of you that we're going to be on this project for several years, and I'm here to meet and help the community and make sure we're coming up with the right solutions overall. So with that, PV panels, just very quickly. If you recall, when I was last here, the design showed, or the elevation showed, a penthouse, that is, something above my head, and then the PV panels on top of that. What we've gone to is a different design, where the PV panels themselves have been lowered down, so they're, if this were the deck, the top deck of the garage, one foot four inches off the deck, and then they slope up from there to about seven foot two inches. So at eye level, looking at that over the parapet wall, you're only going to see a little over three feet of the top edge of that triangle. And then, if you think about the garage, and if, and most everybody around it is below the garage, if you're looking up, something would have to be in the neighborhood of 12 to 16 feet tall, depending on your distance, for you even to see an item. So in that case, from most of the surrounding areas, the PV panels won't even be visible. There is an actual engineering kind of cross-section, so if you look at the red dash line on there, that's kind of your parapet wall height, and it shows how we lowered the panels down from starting at 10 feet down to that one foot four inch. So I think, and Mr. Sallop, we presented, showed those drawings to him, and my understanding, it's in the response as well, that he is satisfied that that meets theirs. So sir, Mr. Chairman, and Commission, you know, I've worked this project really hard, and I feel like we've done the right things for the community, and, you know, hope you would agree and approve our submittal on this Phase 1 portion of the project, and standing by for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manselman. I'll note that in the packet, the supplemental packet, in case you haven't gotten through it, there are many communications from community members, including those who were in opposition or who sought additional improvements that are now supportive of the project. There's also a letter from the engineer on stormwater, noting that they've met, in their opinion, the maximum extent feasible, technically feasible for the stormwater. So with that, yeah.
Chairman, I had moved the approval. That's been requested.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Sure, I just want to comment that, though I was given some note, it wasn't my action, it was the Commission's action that brought you back.
Sir, I'm sorry.
I just made a suggestion, and I'm not surprised at the results at all. I'm not surprised, because since early on, you guys, we all would work it out, and you did, and that's great. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And before Mr. May says something, I will draw to your attention that you recall in the EDR, it does delegate the final approval to the executive director for certain things, including site and landscaping and furniture, or such. Mr. May?
No, I just wanted to express my gratitude to Mr. Manselman and the entire team working on this for their cooperation with the Park Service. In the end, everything seems to be working out well. I also appreciate, you know, we had a few last-minute questions based on the correspondence from July 6th, those were answered. And I know we owe you some information on who the principal point of contact will be for the Park Service as we continue to work together on this.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And I'm looking forward to that relationship, and I've worked with several of your folks. Looking forward to continuing that dialogue, and like I say, we'll have the chance to monitor and watch and make sure that the design is working as intended. Yes, sir.
Right. And you'll be there for 40 years, and I think we'll be there at least that long.
It's probably long. Yes, sir.
So anyway, I want to thank you, and I also want to thank David Berg and the neighbors who worked so hard.
Yes, sir.
Because they shared a common concern with the Park Service and helped us achieve the best possible result. So I appreciate that, and of course, I appreciate the staff bearing with all of us and working through it as well.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anything additional? Does our resident Bethesda expert have anything? Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Come in, please.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
I would like to add my appreciation for the extraordinary Herculean efforts above and beyond.
I don't know, it's kind of like.
I noticed that you're not wearing your Purple Heart from the flesh wounds.
No, sir.
That you've incurred, you and Mr. Olson. I think some of those special efforts need to be noted. We talked about the stormwater management, the retention versus detention, we talked about the photovoltaics. I think there's also an important piece of documentation in the package, June 25th letter from Mr. Leggett, issued well prior to even your supplemental letter of commitment. I think the extraordinary level of cooperation with the homeowners' associations, I think all nine, nine of nine are now on board. In fact, there's even a comment in one of them saying, "Further delays would be costly to the community and the federal taxpayer." I think we're in violent agreement that we need to please approve this project so that we don't incur schedule or construction delays. In addition, all of the requirements from the staff have been met. The site development plan, the amended traffic impact study, the information about the comparison of the ESA versus the 438, and on and on, deforestation and so forth. So I think there's been clearly repeated demonstrations of good faith on behalf of the applicants, for which you should be commended.
Thank you.
Congressional medals of honor to follow.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Again, it's been moved and seconded, sensing no further comment. All in favor of the EDR's presentation, say aye.
Aye.
Propose no? Mr. Manselman, congratulations.
Sir, thank you, thank you very much for the approval. I also wanted to acknowledge the University of Oklahoma intern, having graduated from the Architecture School at University of Oklahoma. I think you're already putting him back to work, so. Thanks, sir, thank you very much.
Again, thank you for your diligence.
Yes, sir.
Now go away.
Yes, sir. You have more important things to do, I know. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. We have two remaining items, both information presentations. Agenda item 6A is information- Agenda item 6A is information presentation on the memorial trends in practice in Washington, DC.
Hi, good afternoon.
Welcome back, Ms. Kim.
Today I'm offering a status of a memorial research project we've undertaken with the Park Service. The research was completed in 2011, and we're currently finalizing a draft summary. We anticipate bringing that draft to the Commission this fall with a request to release for public comment. Today I'm pleased to welcome David Hayes, who is a wave, who is the Regional Planner and Transportation Officer at MPS National Capital Region, and he's been working with me on this project, and I'd also like to thank Peter May for his support and the good work of his staff. So just a quick background note on the Commemorative Works Act, or the CWA, which governs the memorial process. In summary, the CWA defines commemorative works. It provides guidelines on content. It requires Congress to authorize each memorial by separate law. It separates the legislative process on subject matter from site selection and design, which is generally delegated to the agencies. It establishes a reserve in Area One, and it also establishes a National Capital Memorial Advisory Commission, or NICMAC, as we like to call it, which is chaired by the National Park Service and provides guidance to congressional sponsors, memorial sponsors. The Department of the Interior consults on sites and designs, does a variety of things, and also the CWA precludes donor recognition. So these are just a few highlights. The Act does, does quite a bit more, but in terms of NCPC's role in the memorial process, we do sit on the NICMAC. We approve site and design, in addition with several other agencies. So we have a lot of resources available to us about our memorials. The Park Service, for example, has a wealth of information on its website about memorials on parklands. Of course, there's a really excellent Washington sculpture by Gude, which provides a really comprehensive history of memorials. But we consistently receive a lot of very basic questions about our memorials from lawmakers and the public. How many do we have? Where are they located? Are we building more on average per year? So these are just very basic, sort of fundamental questions. And so with this study, we sat down with the Park Service and are basically taking a lot of our deep institutional knowledge and providing it to a public in a way that's accessible, and to the agencies in a way that can be easily analyzed. So the report is really primarily an analytical document. So there were four tasks associated with the research. First, we developed a memorial catalog, which included a lot of information, including about sponsorship. So for example, we know that the Joan of Arc statue was given by the Women of France to the Women of the United States, so little fun facts like that. We identified the major subject matter themes, sort of a very broad look, but the information is in Excel, so the public could easily take a look at it and manipulate the information and draw its own conclusions about sort of subject. To place our own process in context, we explore the practices of other capital cities in the US and abroad, so we ask some very general questions. What are some of the big challenges that you face in your memorial process? What policies and plans have you put together to address those challenges? So the list of cities that we interviewed include Ottawa, Canberra, Berlin, Salt Lake City, St. Paul, and Boston. And finally, we documented the sequence of decisions from authorization to approval for four completed memorials here in Washington, with representative issues for study. So we had a very large memorial with a complex site selection process, with the Air Force Memorial. We have an international gift and several smaller memorial projects. The Victims of Communism Memorial had a rather sort of modest memorial element, but they have a robust e-museum. I don't know if that's what they call it, but that, that sort of, it provides a lot of interpretive information and factual information in an online digital format, which may be something that we see in the future, more memorials exploring. The AIDS Quilt, for example, which is here this weekend on its 25th anniversary, has a very robust digital presence. So I think that will be an interesting trend for us to follow moving forward. And so the study that we are working on basically summarizes all of these research tasks, and then it provides some very basic information, such as a summary of the major plans that have shaped our memorial work, agency roles, and some key topics associated with memorials and venues that the agencies can explore to address those topics. So why is this work important? Memorials are complex, no matter where you are, but in Washington, as in other capital cities, memorials take on heightened significance, because these are places that reflect our relationships between nations, some of the most significance and significant events and people in our nation's history, and so this is a topic of interest for many Americans. Although, although memorials in Washington are a public decision involving these national moments, they're also very personal for the sponsors who advocate for the, for those projects, and so we balance that here. And so because of these complexities, the agencies really have a very long history of working together on memorials. In the past, we've really explored physical planning strategies to protect them all, so you see that with the Memorials and Museums Master Plan, with the Monumental Core Framework Plan. This current study is sort of the other side of the coin. It looks at some very broad trends about memorials over time. Over the years, we've heard a lot of very anecdotal information about what's going on with our memorials, and we hope that this publicly accessible information will be a tool to sort of have a more substantive discussion about commemoration and some of the trends. So I'll just go through just a couple of samples of the type of information that you'll see in the report. The research is designed to really give us a snapshot of a variety of angles, so here you see memorials over time. We are moving away from commemorating individuals to more groups, and I think that's also something that's been documented in historical scholarship. We often hear that we are building more memorials now than ever before, but actually, if you look at the trends of authorizations and completed, we're, we're sort of on the same, we're on a consistent path, I guess. We looked at memorial themes, so we'd have a better understanding of the types of projects from a content perspective that we are building, and we can look at this in a spatial way, too. So here you see mapped some of the international gifts that we have in Washington, and as you can see, they're on 16th Street, Massachusetts, and Vermont. This is something we hope would be useful as we look at citing future international gifts. One of the many factors that we look at when citing memorials is nexus, so the relating the subject matter to the site. That can be challenging with international gifts, but I think we've sort of, over time, formed nexus areas, so. Finally, we hope that the research will help us measure our own success from sort of a very broad policy level look. On the left, we have the Memorials and Museums Master Plan, which clearly suggests that it's important to locate memorials throughout Washington. On the right, we have our current memorial distribution. We think that the master plan has been very successful in sort of its main objective of trying to encourage sponsors to look at opportunities off the mall, but we certainly have a long way to go towards introducing memorials throughout all four quadrants of the city. So in terms of, just an example of the types of applications of the study, we hope that it supports the work of NICMAC. We hope that it can support how we cite memorials, and specifically international gifts. We'd like to identify opportunities other than permanent memorials for sponsors to consider. NICMAC has an opportunity to meet with many sponsors who have interesting ideas, but that may not meet the standards of the Commemorative Works Act. Are there other options than permanent memorialization that they can explore? The AIDS Quilt is a great example of that. Finally, one of the things we learned during the case study research is that there might be some issues that we could resolve by publishing a manual, or some type of a process document that would help really explain who the key players are in the review process and what our interests are. We've been looking at this Foreign Missions and International Organizations Guide, which is a Department of State manual giving foreign governments the facts if they want to build consulates or things here in Washington. I'm not saying what we do needs to be this sort of formal, it may be an online, you know, sort of document, but we like this because it, it involves a process that includes a number of federal and local entities, and so if you, in your capacities, have interesting manuals that you think might be applicable to the memorial process, my door is open, so please let us know. Finally, we wanted to offer the public a tool as well, so to give the agency some interesting analytical work, but also we, we looked at a, an interactive map. This is sort of unsatisfying in a screenshot here, but basically, most of the research is available to the public in an online Google platform. We received about 13,000 comments on this map over the last year, and people were so interested in adding memorials that aren't on Park Service land, that we're gonna do a Phase Two application, so we've got some really excellent interns out in the field taking photos in sites throughout the region, so we hope that we'll be able to do an interesting Phase Two application. And so as I mentioned, we'd like to bring this back this fall with the draft for the Commission to review and release for public comment. We'll be circulating the draft here in the next several months, and then we'd like to have a final draft in 2013. So thank you very much. Is there any questions you have?
You have, I just want to make a comment. You have done such good work on the memorials writ large issue for so long.
Thank you.
It's really extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. Would you, what were the cities that you went to for some insight again? I just was curious about the, how they spread out.
It was, it was, it was very interesting. We had St. Paul, Boston, Canberra, Ottawa, I don't want to miss any, and London and Boston. Thank you.
Okay. I just.
Very fascinating.
Yeah. I just wondered whether or not, something south of the border, South America, some of those areas down there, would, may have a different spin, but I know that's money and, and time, but, you know, in other places like Egypt, which you may not be to get into at the moment, but.
You know, it's an iterative process.
They have a, like thousands, thousands, thousands of years of history of dealing with memorials. Be kind of interesting to see how they evolved.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
The other thing is your digital effort. I just wondered whether it'd be an interesting idea to encourage future folks with memorials to include in their budget?
Mm-hmm.
A digital piece?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe if they are encouraged to do that, it may not be such sizable structures and sizable, I mean, the Vietnam Memorial, for example, which we just, you all voted on, I wasn't here for it. They, they, the information they want underground, if it was digital, would maybe have saved that space for something else or keep it green. But if we do that, maybe we could kind of redirect some of the energies and make it a part of it. I don't know whether it's something the Commission or you all would think about adding. I don't know. Also, action memorials, you know, like playgrounds, so the Kennedy Playground up on O Street, I guess it's still there, things where people not only have to see things, but they can do things for children, participate with a different type of a memorial, you know. I guess a basketball or a recreation facility could be a memorial that could be used and could still remember people or actions, events. And I also have to make my usual point, I just hope we can keep this percentage of war, or memorials, for a lot of reasons, down related to wars. I mean, as a, I mean, I probably, I won't be around, but hundreds of years from now, I won't be around, but maybe we won't be looked back as a country that didn't put so much emphasis on our, you know, on our, on our central axis, on our nation's capital, focusing on war. Maybe we can find some other things. I mean, King's like a, an example of peace and, and nonviolence, and there are other people historically that could be cited, so.
Thank you.
Less war. No wars, hopefully.
Thank you.
Ms. White?
I, I couldn't agree with you more, and I just wanted to echo your comments, and I'm curious, in the cities that you looked at, do any of them have a comprehensive analysis like this?
Two, yes. That was part of, sort of, it helped us to sort of guide how we did the catalog, but yes, both of them in Canada.
And are the percentages roughly the same? I'm very curious, because we, we both noticed the 51% were military-related or war memorials. Do you have any idea how we compare with the, the two cities in Canada? I can.
It's more heavily weighted here to war, and statesmen also. In Canada, they actually have policies that try to encourage underrepresented material, but the decision about subject is really squarely in congressional purview, so the agencies have a very strictly advisory role as far as content is concerned.
That's fascinating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to make another point, I, I know that we have very little, sometimes, control on what, what goes in.
Yes.
Because Congress gets involved often when we try to encourage them not to. But, I mean, I thought about, I mean, Rome, I mean, gotta get, they're places where they have a lot of, lot of history. Seems to me that their idea of how they handle memorials may not be helpful, but maybe at least they, they got a lot there, in other countries that we know about, all of us. So just, and to raise that as maybe, in the future, maybe something could be looked at.
Absolutely, it's a, it is a, we want to keep building sort of our repertoire. I don't see this as being a process that stops, so I, I welcome additional cities that we could study.
Oh, Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, thank you for your great work and for this wonderful report. An aspect of our memorials, I think, that perhaps we locals are occasionally blasé about, and which you can see through the eyes of our visitors, who come here and are such awestruck by, by what they see all, all around, is that so often the people who we memorialize, and the events that we memorialize, occurred here. And there are memorials to these people and these events all over the country, but here is where so many of these great events occurred, and where so many of these great people did their work. And to me, that's an aspect that is, makes our devotion to our memorials so, so important, and so extraordinary, and so different. You get that impression, at least I do, when you go to Fort McHenry, and people realize this is really where Fort McHenry is, and where these events occurred, or to the Boston Commons, and so on and so forth. But here, it's all over, and it's everywhere, and I think that's an extremely important aspect of why these memorials are so important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. May?
I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, the, doing something online, doing e-memorial type work, that actually is becoming something that is starting to happen. I don't know that it necessarily has an effect on the size of the memorial itself that gets built, or its impact on the landscape, because the biggest e-memorial project we have going is also the Eisenhower Memorial, which is not small. So, and then with regard to war memorials, I don't know, did you look at anything in terms of how the, the trends are? Because I would expect that over time, we're doing a lot less, and a lot of the war-related memorials are older memorials.
Commissioner May is right. I mean, I think that sort of gets back to the trend from individuals to groups. I think we have made 21 Civil War-related memorials, and now, you know, as we commemorate wars, we're doing it by a single war memorial. So yeah, I think that would be a good trend to highlight.
Right. The other thing is that the Commemorative Works Act addresses specifically war memorials and memorials to the military and so on, and I think that guidance also helps kind of keep it a bit more restricted than you might expect. Although, you know, one of the, one of the restrictions is that 10 years have to pass from the end of a conflict before any sort of commemoration can be contemplated, and there's always somebody watching the clock. And so, for example, we have legislation that has been or will be introduced shortly regarding Desert Storm, and so those things just sort of happen, as I said, like, like clockwork. Anyway, thank you very much for all of your work on this study, and we look forward to continuing to work with you on getting the final product done and released.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last item on the agenda is also an information presentation, Agenda Item Number 6B, about the proposed Purple Line Light Rail, which is no small project, and Mr. Wheel was here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Maryland Transit Administration and their consultants are here today to provide you with background information on the proposed Purple Line project. This is in anticipation of Commission review of the project for concept approval this fall, preliminary review in 2013, and final review in 2014. The Purple Line is a proposed regionally significant light rail transit line that will extend roughly east-west between Bethesda and New Carrollton through the inner Maryland suburbs. The facility will provide direct access to a number of important. facility will provide direct access to a number of important transportation systems, including metro rail and metro bus, MARC, Amtrak, and the local bus systems from Montgomery and Prince George's Counties. While NCPC has an interest in the project through the comprehensive plan and the Womata Compact, in particular, NCPC will review the project under the 1930 Capra-Crampton Act, which utilized federal funding to acquire stream valleys in the district, Maryland, and Virginia to preserve these lands as a regional park system. The Capra-Crampton Act gives NCPC approval authority over modifications to these parks' general development plans to ensure that their development is in accordance with plans approved by NCPC. And here's a graphic that shows the four Capra-Crampton parks, shown in green. And you can see their location in relation to the proposed Purple Line alignment. And again, the Capra-Crampton Act affords NCPC approval authority over the modifications for these parks' plans in order to accommodate the proposed alignment. NCPC will also review the project relative to the Forest Glen Annex and NOAA Headquarters Building in Silver Spring, Maryland, both of which are federal assets located in close proximity to the proposed alignment, as well as the BW Parkway National Park Service property, which the proposed alignment will cross. And with that, I'll hand over the presentation to Harriet Levine, who is one of the lead consultants on the Purple Line project, to provide the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to start with a general overview of the project and where we are in the process and our schedule, and then get into some more details in terms of our coordination and public outreach. First, I do want to thank Mike Wile for his continued participation with our study team, along with National Park Service, who's here, and Federal Transit Administration, as well as the other agencies we're working with that I'll mention a little later. It's been great in terms of helping us progress the project. To give you a little bit of orientation, this is the Capitol Beltway around the top, the Purple Line. See how I'm doing here. Preferred alternative is light rail. It's a 16-mile corridor. We have 21 stations. As mentioned, we have major connections to transit at the Bethesda Metro Station, Silver Spring Metro Station, the new Tacoma-Langley Transit Center, College Park Metro, and then New Carrollton Metro. We also connect with local buses throughout the corridor. The Purple Line will provide faster, more reliable transit for the region's east-west travel. We also serve a lot of transit-dependent communities and communities where people have chosen to have one or less vehicles to access jobs in the area. It also strengthens and revitalizes communities and has a potential to increase transit-oriented development along our corridor and at particular stations with both counties are working with us to design as appropriate. Our preferred alternative has 21 stations. And I mentioned the connections to metro. Also, we connect to all of the MARC commuter lines, Amtrak, and local bus service. Our projected ridership is 60,000 daily riders. And what's interesting is that 30% of our riders are projected to use metro for part of their trip. So it's people who are taking the Purple Line to get to metro to come downtown, or maybe vice versa, to go out to the suburbs. We also estimate that this will result in taking 20,000 cars off the road daily. We have two projected storage and maintenance facilities, one in each county. We do go through both Montgomery and Prince George's County, and we've split those storage and maintenance facilities between the counties. And our year of expenditure cost estimate is $1.9 billion. Our current schedule, in October 7 of 2011, we got approval to enter preliminary engineering, which is the phase we're in now, where we do our preliminary engineering work. We also prepare our final environmental impact statement. At the end of this process, which is expected, I will hedge on that spring. I'll say spring/fall 2013. It's probably closer to fall 2013, where we'll complete our final environmental impact statement and get a record of decision. Then we actually request permission from the Federal Transit Administration to enter final design, and that's the next formal step. We're projecting construction to begin in 2015, with begin of operations in 2020. During preliminary engineering phase, which we're in now, we're refining our engineering. We're developing more detailed costs, benefits, and impacts of the project. We are planning our construction phasing and staging. We're developing more detailed operating plans and funding sources, and looking at right-of-way requirements for the project. We have extensive coordination with FTA throughout this process. And as I mentioned, they'll have final approval at the end of this stage before we can enter the next phase of the study. A little bit about our public outreach. We have an extensive outreach program. We have a mailing list of over 60,000 individuals. We also have an eBlast list that we use. We've held larger public meetings and open houses and hearings throughout the course of the project. We also have what we call our neighborhood work groups. And these are smaller work groups. We have one for each of our 21 station areas. We also have work groups for some of our corridors where we might look at trail or streetscape elements. And these smaller groups really allow us to sit down with people in those communities and get into the details of station access design, amenities, bike facilities, how people might get to the station, you know, do bus connections or bus stops need to move a block in one direction or another, so we have better connections in those areas. We have what we call our Speakers Bureau, where by invitation, we'll go out to any group. And we've gone to hundreds and hundreds of meetings over the years with special interest groups, stakeholders, and residents. We also do stakeholder meetings. If there are groups we feel we need to talk to, or groups that we feel are underrepresented through the process, we'll reach out to them and do targeted outreach in those areas. And finally, we do smaller community outreach events. And these are events where we'll go out to major employment centers or community activities with informational displays. We'll be at farmers markets. We've also had tables at NIAH and other major employers in the area so that we can reach out to our potential Tied to the public involvement is our agency coordination. We have formal interagency review meetings, which is all of our regulatory and resource agencies. We go to them on a regular basis. At various times in the project, when we have new information or progressing into another phase, we've done targeted field reviews with the agencies, wetland field reviews, taking them out to see specific resources in the area. And we also do agency-specific coordination, where we've been meeting with the National Park Service, the Corps, both counties' park departments, Maryland National Capitol, your commission staff, as well as National Park Service and Department of Environment and Department of Natural Resources. This is just a sampling of the list of the agencies we've been working with. And it's through those coordination meetings that we're talking about where we traverse through the corridor, potential impacts. We talked about the four stream valley parks. We do cross all of those at existing crossings to minimize impacts. There are minor projected impacts in terms of strip takes along existing roadways. We don't affect any of the park facilities or developed areas within the parks. And we're working with, in the case of the Parkway, the National Park Service, and the other parks with both counties' park departments to look at both minimization as well as mitigation options at each facility, as well as county-wide In terms of our future steps, and Mike mentioned this schedule, we anticipate coming back to you in the future with additional, more detailed presentations about the project, looking for a concept presentation in the fall of 2012, with preliminary approval in 2013 and final approval in 2014. And that's what I have, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. It's been a while since I had a briefing on this project, and I appreciate it very much. I heard $1.9 billion. Is that how much more, or is that the total cost?
That's the total cost estimate in the year of expenditure.
How much more will it cost than has been spent now, and who will pay what?
We hope to get up to 50% federal funding for the construction. FTA's here. Can I ask for more? Typically, transit projects are, now are receiving approximately 50% federal funding. The other 50% of the construction funding coming from local, meaning state, local, or private contributions to the project.
And you said that it's, well, it's not a metro project, right?
No, it's not a metro.
MTA.
Maryland Transit Administration.
Okay, so it'll be MTA. So the modal split would be to, if you were going east to west, would be to get from metro onto the Purple Line and off of the Purple Line and onto metro, if that was the route you were taking, if you were going east to west. Is that correct? Because you said there were, there were connections to metro stations?
There, we have four stations that are adjacent to existing metro stations: Bethesda, Silver Spring, College Park, and New Carrollton. So in those areas, we're right outside the metro station. Somebody in Tacoma Park, for instance, either instead of driving or taking a bus, could take the Purple Line over and then transfer and get onto metro if they wanted to go downtown. We also see a lot of people, most people don't take, aren't projected to take the Purple Line from end to end. Most of our riders aren't going from Bethesda to New Carrollton or back. They're doing midpoints in between suburb to suburb or suburb to metro, and then either in or out on the system.
Are there any studies as to the number of modal splits it would take to discourage people from using transit of this nature?
There are studies, and it's built into the model. There is a slight penalty every time you have to transfer, whether it's an auto metro transfer, or a bus metro, or a Purple Line metro transfer. That does go into the modeling effect.
Would two be at the upper limit, or more than one?
No, I mean, even within our system today, a lot of people make two transfers. So a lot of people will take bus to metro now, and then they have to transfer within the metro system from one line to another. And another, and tied to that, is that we also look at the propensity of people to use transit. And we're a very transit-friendly area where we have a high percentage of people who already use transit. And that also goes into the model, because we know that people are inclined to use transit. And then they would be inclined to make a transfer or an additional transfer. So that goes into it. I don't recall the exact number. It diminishes the more transfers you add, obviously.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. All at grade, or a mix of above and below?
Mostly at grade. We have one very short tunnel where the grades of the road are too steep for us. So we sort of punch into the side of a hill and come back out. It's less than a mile long. And then we have one or two aerial segments, but they're really bridges. We go over Connecticut Avenue. We go over Rock Creek Park. And we're aerial through the Silver Spring Transit Center and over CSX.
Are you going to be elevated in some areas that are prone to flooding? Is that part of your planning?
We look at flooding. We're mostly along existing roadways and trying to stay at those elevations to avoid being within the floodplain. There's one area where we actually will be in the floodplain at the crossing of Sligo Creek, and the existing road already is.
That's what I was thinking of.
Right. We're aware of that. We're doing studies now in looking at, we have to replace that bridge. And we're doing hydraulic studies to see about the capacity under the bridge, what that does to flows, where the storm level might be, and then what the elevation of the bridge and tracks would be to the, what storm year we get to. We don't want to raise that bridge more than we have to because of the tie-ins from Sligo Creek Parkway and the rest of the facility. So we're really trying to stay as close as possible to the existing road grade.
Okay. Any protections for going through residential? I'm thinking about the walls to buffer the noise of the passing cars for a commercial land or residential.
Transit is different than highways. It does generate noise. Most of the noise comes off the rail instead of higher-up traffic noise. In some areas, through the town of Chevy Chase, we are talking about very short noise walls, four-foot walls, that capture most of that noise along the Capitol Crescent Trail, the interim trail where we're through some backyards there. What we tend to find when we do our noise studies is where we're along or in the median of existing roads, you don't really hear, the, the delta is very small. It's almost like another bus or two in the mix of traffic. So you don't notice the difference. But we are doing detailed noise studies now as part of the FEIS. And if we see a need, we'll do mitigation.
Okay. Operational question for many years down the road, but ease of, for the traveling public from going from one system to another, do you currently, is, are there electronic connections, for example, between MTA and Womata? I'm thinking about just ticketing and.
In terms of fare cards?
Fares, yes.
Our goal is to be smart card compatible in our system. So you might have to go buy a ticket vending machine, but you'll be able to hold the card up like you do in the metro system.
And it would be recognized.
It would be recognized for a ticket. We want to be fully compatible.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Praventa. Additional questions for Ms. Levine? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anything else to come before the Commission? Hearing none. The Commission will rise.